This is the April 17th, since we have a planning board meeting. In accordance with the Oklahoma Public Meeting Law on December 11, 2018, and March 28, 2019, those of this meeting, today, the time, date, and location was sent to the home, which you reviewed, filed with the county clerk posted on the bulletin board, the lobby, and this will be. Copy of this note is incorporated in Vincent's meeting. Chair reserves the right call and application in order, different from that of period other meetings. And on each application, the chair will give the public a much appreciated comment. Planning board will take note of this as a standard, and the other area will call the office by a letter. Doors outside of the auditorium are the exits to be used in case of fire or other emergencies, and if you're able, please rise and join me in the classroom.
The United States of America, and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every being and every honor.
Thank you very much. Once again, before we start, I apologize for my dark glasses, I'm not being serious, I have very light sensitive eyes, and it bothers me a great deal. Item is, first item is roll call warrants. Please call them.
Mr. Schmidt. Mr. Hoffman.
Here.
Mr. Jones.
Here.
Mr. Reese.
Here.
Mr. Robman.
Here.
Mr. Spol.
Here.
Officer DiCaprio.
Here.
Mr. Havel.
Here.
Mr. Pidger. Eric Carwin. Chairman Taylor.
Here. The next item are minutes. We've all received in our packet the minutes of the meeting for March 27. What is the, we, minutes by voice vote, what is the board's pleasure with the minutes? Who, second, any discussion, comment? Seeing none, all is in favor of, of Dr. Minutes' submitting, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Or opposed, any abstentions, the minutes are scattered. The next item of business is a resolution. Mr. Sax, do you want to comment on that?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I had intended to have this resolution adopted this evening, this was a hit Oakwood's alvery application, which was denied by the planning board. I did send a draft of that resolution to Mr. Petrino, which is usually my standard procedure. I sent it to him on April 5, and tonight, while I was eating dinner, I happened to look at my phone, and I see an email from Mr. Petrino at about 6:30, stating that he has some comments as to this resolution. So, in fairness to Mr. Petrino, what I will do is carry this resolution. Mr. Chairman, would you give permission to the next meeting, which we really have a different time? I'll review his comments, and if I need to make any modifications to the resolution, I'll do so.
Good. Getting back to, to our resolution, to our agenda. Old Business Application 18-35D, H.B. Summerhill. Just let me kind of lay out how I envision the evening going. I think that this will be kind of the last full-blown meeting that we have on this application. Mr. Hillman, do you have any more testimony, exemptive response to a question or the objector's case?
No, Chairman Taylor, my understanding is Mr. Barlow is going to proceed, I'm just redirecting or bar, but no, no other further testimony.
So, an objector is, an attorney's here representing an objector, they're going to put on their case, which is their reason why they think this application shouldn't be denied. I will then open it up to any member of the public. You've all been wonderful, it's been like the sloth for all of us, so feel free to ask a question on anything tonight. The, I'm not sure what, which among the applicant's experts are here, but you can ask any question you'd like. The board will have a chance to ask a question, then hopefully we'll get out of here at a reasonable hour tonight. The board will, the individual members will contemplate and consider, go back, you know, I would go back and, you know, look at the minutes, and then at the next meeting, do any kind of cleanup we need to do, and then take a photo of this application. So, it's late at the end of that time. So, with that, however, Mr. Hillman, you have no opening, or?
No, I mean, I spoke to Mr. Barlow, with your permission, I guess he would just want to proceed.
Thank you, Chairman Taylor, it's just asking, who's the board? Just from a planning perspective, my intention to cross-examine the remaining witnesses other than traffic, which we did last time, I have three witnesses I plan on calling.
Okay.
I have a brief closing, and then I expect to be done at that point, and then, as my understanding, the board will do the next one.
Sure. And really, you've been very patient, as is required, you take your time, you go through what you need to go through.
I appreciate that. We're here for Chairman Taylor. As in, the last time, I could try and go along at a time, and if Mr. Hillman believes that I'm asking of the whole witness, just let me know, and I'll correct it.
Sure.
Should try and go in some order. First couple of questions are directed to Mr. Manoya.
Okay.
The developer. With regards to the application, is there any intention on your part to eventually subdivide the two commercial leaseholders?
Not at this time.
Okay. Would you be amenable to that as a condition of approval?
We would consider it, we have to give some thought toward the impact to our construction loans and our permanent financing with it.
And just to confirm, I believe the testimony indicated that the individual garages are not tied in any way to particular apartment units, correct?
Correct.
So theoretically, you could have a spot down in the building in the southern portion, have an apartment there, or have a garage in the northernmost building, correct?
That's correct, but unlikely.
Now, and the affordable, excuse me, the garages are an additional charge, I believe, and corrected from all the testimony, somewhere in the neighborhood of $300 to $400 is what you're planning it to be?
I don't recall that, excuse me, I don't recall that particular amount, that there is an additional charge.
Okay. Do you have any history in any of the other?
Typically, they're 200 to 250.
Okay. And are they tied in any way to the affordable housing units?
No.
Do the affordable housing unit apartments have different fixtures and amenities in them than the market rate units?
No.
No. I realize we've been through a lot of meetings, so I'm going to try and take your attention back to the first planning board meeting. I believe somebody from the audience asked you, what happens if a tree falls from, say, your property on the western side and lands on one of the properties on Francis Street? Do you recall that?
I recall some discussion about trees falling, but not that specific question.
Okay. And I believe, but again, if Mr. Hillman's recollection is different than mine, you had indicated that if a tree fell from your property onto one of the, for instance, really in this case, one of the Francis Street homeowners, that you, not you personally, the development would be responsible for its removal and any repairs. Do you recall that?
I think that's typical of all property owners, yes.
Okay. Would you agree to that as a potential condition of approval?
Certainly. Any tree that's on our property that falls on the adjacent properties, responsibility of the apartment owner.
Okay. Well, the only reason I bring it up is, I think we've all lived through this with Sandy a number of years ago, and actually, most homeowners' policies indicate that if my tree falls on my neighbor's property, my neighbor's homeowner's insurance is actually responsible for its removal.
I understand.
So, that's why I just wanted to clarify, you going above that to indicate that as a condition of approval, you would agree to be responsible for pre-removal and repairs?
Not repairs, removal.
What about the repairs to the, please, understand the tree removal?
No.
If a tree falls in the woods, we don't hear it.
Right. Let's get a little more random. If a tree falls from our property and damages, if it flies all the way to the house, to damage the house, we're not going to repair the house.
Okay. So you're just going to remove the tree?
We're going to remove the tree.
Okay. That's why I just wanted to clarify, because I believe you indicated not only tree removal, but the repairs, and I didn't.
No, I don't believe so. I don't believe so.
Okay. So you're, you're only agreeing that you would remove the tree, you're not responsible for any repairs?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you. Next series of questions have to do with your engineer, Mr. Scannell. Just to start, and you and I may have discussed this, but one of the things I've rattle with throughout this process, is how much the footprint's going to change from what everybody here knows as the greater New York property and the curve line, and where all the trees are, and what's going to happen if this development goes through it. And I know, I believe your testimony was that about 90% of the woods are going to remain, and I think you've indicated certain areas have to be shaped, or a straight line, basically, for purposes of development. And with the curve line that's present, there is essentially a straight line. So, what, if you can use the diagram, or if you've ever created an overlay as to the current property, because I have a hard time grasping where the trees are being removed and how many.
Okay, well, in earlier testimony, I did provide an exhibit, five or first or second meeting, which was an overlay, and I have to be here now, I don't know if the old exhibits have to be here, but, look, I'll try and see if I can butcher this after testimony. Basically, you're correct, it's about 90% of what is, we're developing now is already developed. Exact numbers of trees that are being removed, we have our tree count listed as well, it's in the plans, as far as what's being removed, but generally, go through, you can see the red dot, we can start at the bottom left corner of the stage, the line of 150-foot buffer is generally exactly where the line is today, okay, of trees. Around the first building, this is where the main entrance is to the facility hours, it's to the west of where our closed driveway is now, and in that area, there's a basin and some, you know, trees that are scattered throughout, but wouldn't call up to be the bigger part of the woods. So, a few trees, four trees in this area are being removed, there's none where the building is now, which is primarily where the CBS is, it doesn't start at that, and the rest of the area behind that, to the north and to the northwest, is called the parking area. The northern edge of the site, let's talk about the Chase Bank, I would say from about the northern edge of the Chase Bank, we ran across to about where the parking would start, across the woods that we proposed, there's a notch in there of trees that were being carved out of the woods, creating the straight 50-foot buffer that we're required to provide in addition to the 100-foot buffer.
Okay, well, we get a green pointer right now. So, I mean, I drive there every day, I went there yesterday, and there's a curve line where the greater New York is, correct?
There's a curve line there.
Curve line, and that's a straight curve, it doesn't undulate anyway?
That's right.
Okay. So, where's the current curve line? Because I, I mean, I'm looking at the exhibits 8-1 through 8-10, and the over...
The existing, the existing curve line falls just sort of about the northern, if you project the northerly edge of the Chase Bank, it's about that location line across.
Okay, so, if we, if we have the northern edge of the Chase Bank, we're about there, that's what's served is now.
Yes.
And there's a few feet of grass, and then the trees start. How many feet is it from the northern edge of the Chase to the tree line that you're proposing, the 50-foot buffer? Okay. So the curve line, from the current curve line to where the 50-foot buffer, that's a 63-feet immo amount?
Yeah, it's about there.
Okay. So if I'm out there, I'm...
Again, I don't have the exact number, but it's, give or take a few feet.
Okay. We'll round it to 60.
Sure.
So if I'm standing on the curve, I'm going to walk another 60 feet, and that's where the buffer's going to start.
That's correct.
Okay. All, any trees that are from the curve line, 60 feet north, are all getting cut down.
That's correct.
And that's only about 10% of the, that's 10% of the total trees from the whole buffer zone, but, so it sounds like most of the trees that are going to be cut are going to be in the northern edge, as opposed to the west.
Yeah, that north, that northeast-early corner in that, in the area that we're talking about now, that's where the majority of the trees, the biggest cluster of trees.
Okay. And because the current curve line is pretty straight, it's about 63 feet through the whole northern edge?
Give or take.
Okay. Now, once the trees are taken out and you've shaped it, you still have an elevation issue to deal with, correct?
Okay, one second.
Sure.
All right, so, I just pulled out the demolition plan, so I'm just going to give you some further clarification.
Okay.
I was almost spot on at the, at the location of the Chase Bank, it's about 65 feet, okay, from the edge of that Chase Bank, from the, from where the 50-foot buffer line's going to be.
That's where the trees are.
If we go into the site, there's a width of about 63 feet where trees will be removed. Now, 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 the curve line that you're describing, on that northern edge, does not run parallel with the northerly property, okay? It does not run parallel. And what it does, it dives in, in a more northwesterly direction. So by the time I get to the, to the back corner, okay, where we're looking to... When I, when I get to that corner here, where the residential building is, the swath is about 35 to 40 feet, where we're removing, actually, no, so that's the tree line, is about 25 feet, in that back, in that back corner, where it will be removed. So it goes from 25 feet in the northwest corner, to 65 feet in the northeast or east of here.
Okay. So if I'm envisioning it, if we're using the curve line, in what area it's going about 65 feet?
Yep.
And the other area is going 25.
That's correct.
And in between as well. Now, you, I'm looking at the exhibits, so like I have an 8-3, which is an overlay, but that's the 200-foot overlay, that's not the tree being cut off.
No, no, we didn't, we never did an overlay of saying of the tree being cut off, we did it, we superimposed the area of what was under, what's there now, and we put on top of it, our most line work with development, and it was a very early exhibit that showed the overlay, as we remember being at the larger school, we talked to it, it described and showed how one compares to the other.
Mr. Sax, just by way of clarification, is there such an exhibit, because I have them all, but I don't have an overlay?
It may have been an exhibit that was probably, was a hammer show.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, I mean, I'm sure, Mr. Barlow, if you...
Okay. Are there any exhibits other than 8-1 through 8-10?
No, I think that's right.
Okay. Because I've been providing 8-1 through 8-10, and I just don't, I just think, well, how everyone is, if you took this picture and overlayed the existing site, we'll go out with a better idea of what it is. But you testified to it, thank you.
Yes.
So, referring to the CME report, it indicates you have an elevation issue, I'm referring to page 5, where it goes from about 62 feet to an elevation of about 50 feet, so you got a 12-foot elevation to deal with?
I'm sorry, you're referring to which?
The CME report of 3/22/19.
Okay.
The top paragraph of page 5.
Top paragraph of page 5.
Parking areas moderately sloped in the northwest of the south end, as top eastern direction.
Yes.
From 62 to 50. So basically, from the top left hand corner to the bottom right hand corner, you have about a 12-foot elevation?
Drop.
Drop. Changing how it is, it doesn't matter.
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay. And as a result of that, there are retaining walls that are planned within the development, correct?
That's correct.
And my understanding is, incorrect or wrong, the retaining walls are primarily along the northern portion of the property?
No, they're along both the northern and western edges. The northern wall starts right at the parking lot that we have for Frostwoods, and then extends to the west, to the corner, and then runs down almost the entirety of the western boundary line.
So the entire western side will have a retaining wall and about 50, 55% of the northern, up to where the Frostwoods parking is?
That's correct.
So right about there?
That's correct.
Okay. And according to the plan review, if the retaining wall, once it reaches 2 and 1/2 feet, then there's a fence that has to be put adjacent to it, correct?
Like, we would need to, you know, we would actually provide safety measures on top of that.
Okay. Well, I believe the CME report indicates a fence, correct?
Typically, we do put a fence on top, yes.
Okay. Is the fence on top or adjacent to it?
No, yeah, top.
Okay. But, but just by way of clarification, so the retaining wall ends, I was concerned that the retaining wall ran the whole length of the northernous property, and essentially, you'd have to jump the retaining wall to get into Frostwoods. You're saying it ends where the entrance, so to speak?
That's correct.
This is just a clarification, has it been agreed to that the 14 spots for Frost are thus gone?
As the answer, you're reading that last.
Okay. And still on charging station, correctly?
That's correct.
And there was a little confusion last time, what's the current final count for handicap swats?
16 stills.
15. And could you just point them out to me, and how many are each swat?
We've got the two, if you think.
Okay.
We've got one over the Frostwoods parking, that's three.
Okay.
We continue in a clockwise, clockwise direction, we've got, that's four, five, six.
Okay, so that one on top is just one spot?
That's correct.
Okay.
We come down to, kind of always, that's seven.
That's one spot, okay.
Plus you have eight, nine, 10, 11, one in each building, and that counts towards the ADA stalls.
Okay, but...
And I, I know you're going to go, I stand corrected to my testimony earlier, right, when we talked, as far as the count, there are, so we finish, that's around 11, right? And then we've got four in front of CBS, that's 15. The ones inside the building, you meet the ADA requirement, okay? So, I mean, if you provide a supplemental letter to the board ahead of this meeting, which I believe you have a copy of, to describe and clarify where those were.
Okay. I don't have that letter, but I'll take it, as you were. So, you have 11 spots plus the four inside, correct?
That's correct.
But as we just established about 15 minutes ago, theoretically, Mr. Smith or Ms. Jones could have her handicap garage here, will have to wheel herself down here again to repair it.
I have to get, again, Mr. Manoya indicated, number one, in general sense, it's highly unlikely that to happen, and I would expect it to be extremely unlikely that to happen.
And how many, how many are required?
13 are required.
13 are required. So once you add the four, and you get over the outside 11.
That's correct.
Okay. Generally speaking, when you design residential apartment buildings, is it, is it better from an ADA standpoint to have sidewalks in front of the apartment buildings with the ADA handicap spots up against the building or the sidewalk?
The building, if the building is designed to accommodate sidewalks, I'm sure, but it's not uncommon design to have the drive-by, the ride-just, like we have here, the back bumper, which is Manoya, but other developers, it's a very similar concept. And we provide spaces pro-coated, the closest manner possible that we're doing, we believe we're doing here, and we believe, you know, obviously, final say, by construction.
But, but the manner in which this project has been designed, by putting the parking right in front of the garages and not 10 feet as per the borough code, is requiring another variance, correct?
Does it require another variance?
There's a variance, there's a, the ordinance indicates that there should be no parking within 10 feet of the building. You have parking at 0 feet of the building, so that's one of the variances that's been created, is the way it's been designed, correct?
Maybe that's, if this...
Yeah.
So, for the design, yes.
So, what I'm saying, you designed this in a manner that has triggered the need for another variance, correct?
With the garage, yes.
Yes. And, I mean, you're a skilled engineer, I assume you could design a project that had a sidewalk and had parking 10 feet from the building, if you were asked it.
I could, but, sure, I could, but not for a building that has a garage and needs access to.
But you, you've designed buildings that don't have garages, that have sidewalks and parking 10 feet away from them.
Yeah.
Okay. Now, another question, where did we leave off with snow? Was a snow plane going to be submitted, or now the grassy areas that are dotted are where the snow was going to be kept?
You mean, that's correct.
Okay. And your testimony is, you don't think there will be any sightline issues if the snow from the entire development is piled in those three spots?
No.
Do you have any idea from an engineering standpoint, approximately how many inches of snow could be accommodated on site before you have an issue with KPU on site?
No, you're not.
Okay. On page 27 of the CME report dated 3/22/19, specifically, bullet point 15?
Oh, you have it, I do this.
Okay.
Bullet point 15, to the top of the page.
Now, there was a note that you would revise the plans to space out the proposed landscaping, because that, when this was written, there was no trees in the island. Now, this plan, is, is this the revised plan, are these the trees in the island that, which you're understanding have to be addressed?
Yeah, that's, that's true, but these are also areas, that were providing, you know, areas which we're, you know, for the snow, you mentioned, so, it's balanced between leaving areas for the snow, and also trying to landscape them as well, and we really structure that.
Okay. Because when, when this report was issued, the three areas were completely empty, and they asked that they be revised. So I just want to be clear, is this island right here in the middle?
Yes.
This island?
Yep.
And what's the, is this the third? They mentioned three islands, I, I figured out one and two, I'm just, the third one, this one?
Over the CBS, and in the island south of the closed drive-through bank and lanes, so...
Now, this is one, so...
That would be right. Those are the two areas of the first zone.
Okay. No, no, I'm talking about the, I'm talking about the three areas that were empty and weren't trees.
I know, I know, they're describing, one, two.
So it's one, two, and where's the bridge?
And also provide shade trees in the open island centrally located along Summerhill Road, which again, is...
That's the third island?
That's the third one.
Okay. But no trees have been placed there?
Correct.
Okay. And that was just a design feature, or is there a, a right-of-way here and you can't plan?
No, no, we didn't plan, those are, again, the three areas, those are areas which were designated as, we call it right-of-way areas, to provide help with snow.
No, no, that I understand about the snow room, or I'm questioning the, the board's experts request that shade trees be put in those three areas, so you, a conscious decision was made not to put a tree?
Yes, correct.
Okay.
So I can revise the areas for snow.
Okay. You prepared an environmental impact statement in March of 2018 for our... Yes. I have a question about page 5 of that report, on paragraph 10. It just remembers that the board may, may not have it handy. Under vegetation, it says, "The vegetation on the subject site consists of grass lawns and wooded areas occupying the western and northern portion of the site. There are seven, and then in parentheses, 65, existing trees that are proposed to the proposed development. The proposed landscape plan, however, will provide for an additional landscape plan to some..." The proposed landscape plan, however, will provide for an additional landscape plan for some site, including three, in parentheses, seventy-one new trees, and multiple shrub planting throughout the site." I assume those are just two types of rapid life?
Yeah.
But I just want to be clear, so sixty-five trees, is the capital statement removed based on what you testified earlier?
Well, that's, that's actually not true, because what we did is, this is done in, again, the date of September of 2018.
I have the one, I have provided one from March.
March.
Twenty eighteen.
Okay, so I have one, mine is dated September 2018, regardless, there was a period of time before revisions were made.
Okay.
This is not updated.
Okay, but if you go to page four, do you have a section K for vegetation in the new one?
I do, yes, and it reads the same numbers, it's the same, what you were reading, it's not changed.
So what's the accurate numbers?
Well, that's where I was going, and that, that this environmental impact statement was prepared in 2018. Obviously, we've got several meetings, and we made adjustments to the layout. Also means, uh, similar adjustments to, uh, calculate what the tree removal numbers really are going to be, and if you go to sheet four of our plan set, we have the true removal schedule and compensation calculations. So in those calculations, the total number of trees to be removed is one hundred and sixty-eight.
Okay, so one hundred and sixty-eight are coming out.
That's right, uh, the twenty percent removal credit, uh, for dying trees, which is thirty-four.
So if a tree is already dead and you're basically just clearing it out, you don't have the.
Counting out the one sixty-eight, correct, so subtract that.
So you've got one thirty-four living trees.
So one thirty-four is a required replacement, our proposed replacement is ninety-one, for a deficit of forty-three.
So since this was authored, the tree removal basically doubled, sixty-five to one thirty-four?
And that was, and I'll give you the explanation that it hasn't necessarily doubled, it just was, no, in the original count.
How many have?
Sixty-five to one thirty-four. Well, my point is that the numbers were, no, the numbers were higher than when we did the statement. What it was, is a matter of the survey that was done initially when we prepared the plans, versus the actual, we had a, our person was hired, subsequently due to this application, was hired to walk the site, flag the trees, we then re-surveyed the site to provide a more accurate, uh, number, because the original survey did not specifically call out, and although back to the northeast corner of the site we were talking about, near Chase Bank, that area was not specifically surveyed for the exact number of trees to be removed as part of, and overlaid with the overlay of our plan. So, again, with that information, that's where the numbers became more accurate in, in our plan than was in the original statement.
Okay, so the numbers you just testified to as opposed to the report are the more accurate now?
That's correct.
Okay, and how big does a tree have to be to count? Is it three inches, six inches, if you know? I realize you're.
It is, you know what, um, no, there's, there's a range of trees, the way that the, the tree calculations work is that over trees between six and twelve inches, twelve to eighteen, uh, or eighteen up to twenty-four, uh, you count those, and then you basically do the factor for.
Since you have this written out, I'm just curious, how many of the trees are eighteen to twenty-four?
Uh, forty-one.
Forty-one, okay, so, I know we know each runs against a true town, uh, and there's a deficit of forty-three trees. Is the applicant's, is there a, I don't know if they use the tax basis, is there a tree fund that you, that's a contribution to?
That's, that's correct.
Is anticipated?
Yes.
So that's the applicant's claim, the claim, ninety-one, and then make the contribution for the remaining trees?
That's correct.
Okay. Shrubs don't come in, if you plant a shrub, that doesn't count in the tree count legend, correct?
Correct.
Unless you're the knight of the night to remove. Then again, I realize there's a later report, but on the one I have, on page four, subparagraf E in the noise.
Okay.
It says, uh, "Existing noise levels on site can be characterized as typical of a central New Jersey's office slash commercial zone. Most noises, most noise emanates from passenger vehicle traffic and from adjacent roads, roadways. Daily noise will fluctuate with the hours of operation. Under proposed conditions, only minimal amount of noise is anticipated from the retail paths, which will be de minimis in comparison of the traffic noise generated by the traffic traveling on the adjacent roadways." That stayed the same, that didn't change?
Didn't change.
Okay, were any measurements done of the current noise levels to compare to any federal state standards as to anticipated level?
No.
I think, okay, seven, Dr. Ford, um, there's a comment, no, I take that back, it's not that, okay. I know at some point, CME requested a letter of intent dealing with the number of employees, hours, et cetera, to be provided. Was that done, sir?
Yes.
Now, with regards to the western side of the property. Turn it around. So originally, it was proposed, there was going to be a lead five feet in response to the board wanting some safety concerns addressed. It's my understanding that has been expanded to twenty feet, correct?
Fifteen.
It's fifteen feet?
Correct.
Okay. So it's fifteen, there's a fifteen feet between the tree edge and the, and the units, and you accomplish that by basically moving those three buildings forward?
That's correct.
Now, are the buildings being designed with full NFPA thirteen systems with stand pipes in each stairwell? Is that for your test? Okay, I'll come back to that. But. But, but at fifteen feet, that's not considered firework, correct?
That's not firework.
Okay, all right, so I'll come back to that, you're our architect. Will you agree with me that the proposed development will use more water than the current use?
Yes.
Did you review any materials from NJDEP as to whether these runs of water in the sewer authority has adequate capacity to meet peak day and peak month demands?
We contacted the utility company and confirmed, yes.
When you say the utility company, you mean these sponsors? Are you aware if these sponsors has a water deficit?
Uh, I'm not, uh, if you're saying so, but we did confirm those built.
Does the plan call for any new water connections?
Well, certainly for the buildings, yes, so we're inserting to the building, but we'll have to modify that to accommodate the proposed.
Does that require a JDEP approval?
The, the volume increase will require us to go to EDP.
Can you just briefly describe for me the stormwater management system? I know it's underground, how is that, it doesn't work?
So, right now, you mentioned earlier, the site right now essentially drops from the north west corner down towards the southeast corner, correct? In the earlier, in the earlier discussion, the metcom, right? So, water primarily runs towards the intersection of Summer Hill and Old Stage. So, under proposed conditions, we're maintaining that similar drainage pattern by taking our stormwater and bringing it to the stormwater collection system in that corner. Uh, so basically, what we're doing is on site, in the paved areas, introducing new inlets and piping to collect that water, and bring it to an underground stormwater basin that is located immediately to the east of the southern, or southwest of the most residential buildings.
Kind of under that parking lot?
In that parking lot, in a residential parking lot.
It's underneath it?
That's correct.
Okay.
According to state code, because we're disturbing more than acre, increasing more than, you know, we're disturbing more than quarter acre, we trigger those requirements, which essentially forces us to take the rate of runoff that's coming off this site today, and under proposed conditions, show a reduction in that rate of runoff by various factors for various storms, whether it be the two, ten, or a hundred year storm. So, we've proposed that basin to basically hold water, additional water coming off the new paved areas. And then essentially, that basin helps to choke, hold that water, so that, and then control via an outlet structure in that basin at about the southeast corner of the basin, okay? Allow that water to come out, and a rate less than what's coming off the site today for the stormwater system located in Old Stage.
Does this basin leach into the ground, or does it connect to the stormwater?
No, it connects to the stormwater system.
Okay.
Just, just as the stormwater today coming off that parking lot, and the building connects to the stormwater system.
Was any analysis done on the current off-site flooding issues in the surrounding area?
We were not, we're not aware of any flooding areas. We were not be aware of any flooding, uh, concerns, uh, either by the township, through their comments, nor the county.
Okay, so any flooding that may take place in the Chalkright parking lot to the southeast you were not aware of?
Uh, that's, no, that's another site, uh, that we would not analyze for this project.
But you agree with me that as we, that that's south, the pitch is not, the pitch doesn't end at the corner, it continues to go.
It does.
Okay. If you could turn to page twenty-seven of the CME report under lighting. Now, according to the East Brunswick Code, you're aware that building mounted fixtures are prohibited, correct?
That's correct.
And that's one of the variances that has been requested, is that, um, they want to mount the fixtures onto the wall?
That's correct.
Okay. And I assume you could design, maybe architectural question, nothing that prohibits you from designing this in a manner that would require a building mounted like variances?
Through the addition, uh, additional white holes surrounding the building, just short.
Okay. And pursuant to section one ninety-two thirty-nine D of the East Brunswick Borough Ordinance, um, light is at a minimum of point five foot candles and an average of point seven five foot candles throughout all the parking areas, correct?
That's correct.
And at the time this report was authored, it was in excess of that, and was calculated at two point eight foot candles, which is approximately three or four times brighter. And I believe you testified at the last meeting that additional measures were taken to limit the off-site lighting?
Well, that, the off-site lighting, uh, or the.
The lighting in excess of what's allowed.
So you're talking about the two point eight?
Yeah.
Well, originally, we talked, we were up at levels above four, so we reduced it down to two point eight.
Okay, um, what steps could be taken to lower it so it would comply with the ordinance?
I wouldn't lower it down to the ordinance level.
So you have an issue with these Brunswick Borough Ordinance?
Yes, it's a safety issue. And there's also other, there's also other factors, for instance, Chase Bank, uh, the ATM law that's in place for any banking facility, requires intense light within a, I believe, the sixty foot radius of any ATM or entrance to a building that has an ATM. So we have, we have excessive light levels in that area alone that would never be able to be used because of the use and what federal guidelines dictate for that type of facility.
And I can understand that with regards to the ATM, and frankly, that is gonna have a lot less impact on any residential homes, because you have the woods, and you have the seven eleven across the street. And I understand that there's a state or federal statute that mandates that, that would obviously trump the Borough Ordinance. But what about elsewhere on the site?
I still think that point five foot candle is a, it's a lower standard, and not one that I would apply for residential development, nor retail establishment, which is ongoing at some point.
Okay, but I guess the issue then is, you don't, despite the fact that the ordinance is very clear as to what's required, you don't believe, can it be designed in a way that would meet this pre-ordinance?
I believe so, to be a safe, uh, safe environment for this.
You're not here as a safety expert, Eric?
Well, no, but my, under my license, I'm a design site that is for the health, safety, and welfare. That's what I provide on, so, and looking at this, and looking at the guidelines, we provide the lighting, that means maybe whether the IDS, uh, international lighting standards for, uh, facilities such as retail facilities or banking facilities and/or residential. Uh, we, we look at those, and certainly try to provide a balance between what the standards are for these facilities and what the town code requires us to do. And there's only so much we can do in order to provide uniform lighting, uh, to meet this requirement, but it, it, there's many other parameters, whether it be height of fixtures that are, we also report the height of fixture, distribution of those light locations, and even just the location of this layout of the site.
So, well, I can understand the Chase Bank, and there's a safety concern there, I'm also concerned about the residents of the Old Stage Road, who theoretically, you know, aren't gonna be able to get a good night's sleep, because the lights are gonna be shining there. That's three to four times the light levels of what the ordinance calls for.
No, because the ordinance also requires us not to allow for white spillage from those fixtures now in parking lots to impact those residents.
Okay.
A particular concern in one of the earlier letters was in the southeast corner of CBS Pharmacy.
Yeah.
We did have that spillage, which we revised to remove that condition. So everywhere else, we do have a condition where we do not have white spillage that would impact any of the residents along Old Stage, certainly a lot of the residents to the west, with the East Brunswick, because it's buffered by the owner, but buffered in addition to the fact we don't have lights in that vicinity.
Okay, but you're mounting lights on the exterior of the CBS, correct?
That's correct.
And those lights have to aim out, correct?
No, they aim down.
They aim straight down?
Yes.
Right, luckily, okay. So it's your testimony, there won't be any spillage off-site?
There's no spillage off-site.
I just wanted to clarify something about the garbage, and I understand each building has its own garbage room, and the maintenance people on site will take care of it. Is there a dumpster on site, or is it a trash metal dumpster?
We have a.
Because I just, I've been asked this by all the people, I'm just curious, where is it?
Yeah, there's essentially three locations for dumpsters in the plan, two for the residential, and one, uh, area with.
All the residential dumpsters, correct?
So we have one dumpster, uh, located in the southwest corner of the main parking lot for residential, and one is here.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, there's another dumpster in the south, that we call right in the center of the site, at the southeast end of the, um, Frostwoods parking. And there is another, uh, crash collection area, um, which is at the, enclosed at the west side of the CBS office.
I'm sorry, what, you're gonna crash, like, oh, no, trash? Oh, trash collection, okay, okay, and those have been designed so that a, a full-size garbage truck can get them up?
That's correct.
On the most recent set of plans, which, which this is essentially the site plan for, how many bulk or design variances are actually being sought? What's the number right now?
I don't know that number offhand.
Okay, so you can't break them up for me for what's, what the residential area is called, needs the variances for, what CBS needs variances for, and what Chase needs variances for?
For all the, it's in the, in the report from CME, makes affirmative errors.
Again, I have the report from March, I know the plans have changed, I just was curious what the.
My understanding is the March twenty-second report reflects.
Okay.
Requires planning, and you know what, I believe, if you're Mr. McDonald's here?
Okay.
So I think it's very opening about. Yeah, pages, it is here, pages three and four.
Okay.
I know the majority of it is not.
Okay.
Uh, three, four.
Just from, from an engineering design point of view.
Yes.
Would you be able to design the four buildings with the ninety-six units and make it completely conformant without any variances? Could that be done?
Just the four buildings?
Yeah, just build four residential buildings with ninety-six apartments, I just hypothetically, could you build that on this site and need no variances?
I can't say that I can or I can't.
You can't say you can or you can't?
I can't say whether I can or I can't. Uh, there, there's more, there's more, let's go back to the lighting situation. I may need a variance still for the lighting.
Okay, I'll give you the. Okay, I'll give you the lighting. They play lighting, can you do any other? Can you do a bit of any other?
I really don't know.
Okay. As to the Chase Bank, which needs sign waivers, could that be designed to conform and not need any variances?
It's just signs.
Could you design the Chase Bank, so would you need what you asked?
Is it looking at variances in general or is it just sign variances?
I believe Chase only needs sign variances with regards to that site. It has enough parking. It appears that the only variances that are in the senior report that reference just the Chase Bank site are sign waivers, okay? I assume you could design that and not need any variances, it's just signs.
Sure.
Okay, use the signs. And my understanding is that for CBS, there's a little bit of a parking, you have fifty-nine provided in that area and sixty-six. And then there are a number of sign variances related to that, correct? Again, could you have designed the CBS in such a manner that it would be completely conforming? Would you agree with me though, by combining four residential buildings, the Chase Bank, and the CBS, we have a project that you've designed that is going to need at least some variances?
We have already indicated that in our plan that we need some variances.
You would also agree that without the forty-six garages, you sound forty-six garages, correct? I think we went from fifty to forty-six and then got rid of one, I believe, so, okay. Then if you, if you take out the forty-six garages, I believe you have a hundred and fifty-four surface spots residential where it calls for one eighty-five.
We have two hundred now, yes, that would be correct.
Okay, so if this project was designed without the garages, you'd need to find adequate parking elsewhere on the site, correct?
Yeah.
You need to need a parking variance, you'd have to remove one of them.
Yeah, we would have to modify the layout.
Okay. And my last question for you is just, you could have designed a completely conforming, affordable housing development on this site without any of the two commercial problems, correct?
I can't, yeah, I can't.
Well, thank you, I appreciate your patience today.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, would you like us to add one more? Mr. Scapones, the current plan that presented to the board, how many total residential units are there?
Ninety-six.
If the applicant were to proceed with a hundred and twenty units, what we would propose, could you, and no residential, I'm sorry, no commercial pad sites, could you, could you design now without the variances or waivers? Could you answer that question?
Again, can't tell you whether it would be zero, because I think given some of the ones that we have, whether it be setback parking to buildings or landscaping, there might be a deviation or two, so I can't say fully conforming, but it would be more conforming, I think, than what we have.
And is it fair to say that the, with the current plan presented, ninety-six units, that we've eliminated some of the variances that were previously presented?
That's correct. Okay.
Thank you.
Can we think about a positive grade for you?
Okay. Matt, can you do this? Thank you. The architect, is it, how do you characterize, or break it?
Break it.
Break it? Just to follow up with something that I'd ask, the engineering thought would be more appropriate. Is this building, are the four residential buildings being designed with full NMPA thirteen systems with stand pipes and stairwell?
Yes.
Okay. And that was in, I know that was raised by the fire marshal and that's what he wanted to see, correct?
His client doesn't that way.
What?
His client doesn't that way.
So I think, assuming I already answered the question, amenities are saved for both the affordable market rate, correct?
Correct.
And just to clarify something, when you testified, there were a lot of pictures about the different common room amenities, but just to clarify, according to ADA, it's a twenty-five hundred square foot common area, correct?
Um, sure.
This is the clubhouse?
The club.
Yeah.
The clubhouse.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it was twenty-five hundred?
I believe it was twenty-five hundred, I'm checking it, that is it. Twenty-eight hundred.
Twenty-eight hundred, okay. And again, just to clarify, while we saw a lot of different possibilities, depending on what the, I guess the market will bear, we're not fitting the gym, the pet washing area, the common area, the workstations, the yoga space, amphitheater, it's going to be some-
Yeah, the theater is probably going to be the one that gets removed, I would say, they all have fitness, they all have pet wash and lounge space, those three will definitely be a part of this project. The others will be if space allows, there will be some color in space and how that merges with the lounge space, you know, is yet to be determined.
The, you agree there is less for lounges than units, correct?
Correct.
Were the garages, are the garages present to address the parking requirement or is that a rental issue?
Garages are a luxury.
Okay. I assume you could design a residential apartment building without garage on the first floor, correct?
Yeah, we do it all the time, it's a lesser problem.
Is there, are there washer dryers in the units?
Yes.
So there's no common area where the washer and dryer is open to this garage? That'll feed you, that's all I have to say. The planner review from CME dated three twenty-two nineteen, on page four, and I know there was some discussion, there was a discussion about the thirty-five percent usable space pursuant to two twenty-eight dash one eighteen point seven G seven of the Borough Ordinance, correct?
Yes.
Is this a pullback? Now, my understanding is the way this has been calculated, the hundred and fifty foot western buffer and the fifty foot northern buffer, that has been used to calculate the fifty percent, I'm sorry, the thirty-five percent usable space, correct?
Correct.
And by using that, you got to fifty percent or thirty-five percent was required?
Correct.
Okay. Do you know what the percentage of usable space, if I ask you for purposes of this question, to remove the buffer zone?
I don't, I did not do the calculation.
Okay. How long is the western east side of the property approximately?
The length of the property?
Well, we know it's a hundred and fifty feet wide, correct?
Correct.
Okay, how, how long is it?
I don't know, I have working plans.
So you do not have a calculation for us in response to the Borough Planner as to what usable space is on, I would say, the non buffer zone portion of the property, which she indicated she thought was the appropriate way to calculate usable space, do you?
I cannot have, I have not done the calculation.
Is that a relatively easy, I'm not asking you right now, but is that a relatively easy calculation?
Sure, sure that can be provided.
The plan review also talks about the playground design, there's a lot of discussion about it's four hundred and fifty square feet. And I believe the testimony was, it was kind of just placed there, there's no rhyme or reason to the four hundred and fifty feet, there's no planning calculation that X amount of kids need X amount of square foot for a playground pursuant to any planning standards, was there?
No, I'm not aware of any planning standard for the ratio or the square footage of playground space or player area space per child.
Okay, so it's not, there's no calculation, you get a hundred apartments, it generates X amount of kids, and you need a playground, it's X amount of feet.
The amenity is provided, yes, there's no, there's no planning standard as to the area of what that space should be.
When you do build a playground today though, it has to be ADA compliant?
To my understanding, yes.
Okay, that requires certain, that the rods can be, for instance, if you're in a wheelchair, they have a swing to you, kind of wheelchair, and they can swing, those types of-
To my understanding, yes.
Okay, and I assume that the applicant would comply with ADA requirements for the playground, correct?
I am not aware of any relief that the applicant is seeking with respect to ADA.
From a planning perspective, if the four apartment buildings were designed without garages, they would be in compliance with the Borough Ordinance as the minimum setback for parking, correct?
That's a factual, quantitative analytical question, the answer is yes. It's not a quantitative analysis, it's a qualitative analysis, it's a better project, a more magnetized project to have those weather protected parking spaces in my case.
And I understand that's your planning opinion, I just wanted, my question just deals with, it's possible to design it so you don't need the variance?
The answer to your factual question is yes, but the planning analysis does not stop it.
Okay, understood. I know there's been some back and forth discussion that the plan review indicated there were no, no bike racks on the property and that required a variance, are there now bike racks on the property?
The answer is yes.
Okay, you just, where are they?
The front back, the brand for that one, you replace them.
Again, Brad Scapones, the record, we have racks in between the buildings, there's a couple examples of one point, so I'm right now on the plan.
So there's one, in between the three western buildings, there's bike racks in between two of them?
Yeah, I'm just looking right now, I want to check. Right now, I can talk with one of the, longest, if we have at least those two between the two buildings.
Do you, do you have Mr. Ap, and Miss Ap these three twenty-two nineteen or four?
I have it here on the screen, yes.
So if we refer to the chart on page five, third one, design standards, the bike racks have to be provided outside public and commercial buildings, it was a requirement back then and there was variance required, was not proposed, correct?
To the extent that relief is required, yes.
Okay, but now, is it your testimony based on what the engineer just indicated, that because the bike racks are not proposed, that a variance is not requested, required for that?
Correct.
Okay, so that's one last, okay. There's also a request by the applicant for a variance from item number two, that no all-street parking lot shop obtained more than fifty spots, correct?
Correct.
Is what the, from a planning perspective, are they looking for basically pods or of smaller fifty or less parking spots broken up in some manner?
That was, that was, the answer is yes, that was my testimony, it's a, it's a massive control, the intent of a control such as that is to avoid, I'll say, an expansive parking lot, a sea of asphalt, and I think it's self-evident from the design that the applicant has provided that there's, there's green space bisecting these parking lots to the extent that while the literal requirement of the ordinance may not be met because it is one interconnected parking lot, the spirit of the ordinance is certainly met by virtue of that green space.
Does the ordinance mean that they have to be completely shut off or hypothetically, where I have the red dot, that there would be just a single drive-through and some type of island, so you basically have like forty spots here and forty spots kind of, but they can be connected, or does the ordinance require them not to be connected in any way?
The, the language of the ordinance is what the language of the ordinance is, and it says no parking lots serving any development shall be more than fifty spaces.
Okay, so basically you could have fifty exit and then completely separate and closed fifty up here exit.
Right, and I would think that that type of a design would lessen the planning goal for connectivity, this offers a greater benefit of connectivity.
You're aware that the way the plan has been designed, you can get, you can rent the garage and you get the spot directly in front of the garage, correct?
Yes, yes, it's a tandem array.
If I get this garage here, I automatically have the assigned spot in front of it?
Yes.
And if I, if the resident chooses to park here, basically with one park that tied with three spots, correct?
Not following.
So I have this garage space here and I get this spot in front, correct?
Yes.
Okay, now I come in and for whatever reason I park here, I tie up three, three of the spots using the parking violation, correct? With one park?
Again, those spaces will be, will be allocated to specific units. Conceivably, yes, if someone parks in another spot, that could happen, but that could happen in, in any type of residential development.
Understood, but this is a little bit different in that because of the garages and the spots directly in front of the garages, a single resident in an apartment automatically picks up two spots if he has the garage, correct?
Yes, it's, or, or one tandem spot, however you want to look at it, yes.
One of the variances that's being sought is on the bottom of page five, under parking standards, is the landscaping in the parking, correct?
Correct.
So fifty-seven trees are required per Borough Ordinance in East Brunswick, but only thirty are being proposed, correct?
Correct.
That hasn't changed since the plan was reconfigured, to your knowledge?
To my knowledge, no.
Okay, so we're still twenty-seven spots short within the landscape parking areas, correct?
Correct.
And those would be the air, the areas, for instance, here in the middle, is that what we're talking about?
Yes, and I, I think it's safe to say geometrically, to the areas that you're pointing, the applicant has essentially put a circle wherever it could put a circle in those, in those parking, but it has certainly maximized the landscaping in the parking lot.
I, I mean, to be fair, you could fill in the three spots that have been allocated for storming, those are the only three areas that haven't been allocated with trees.
It's a, it's a balance, yes, I, the applicant has struck a fair and reasonable design balance with the provision of plants and the provision of open space for, for snow rule.
Referring to the bottom of page six under signs, if my math's correct, I believe there are six sign variances that are being requested? So I'm counting the Bs from the bottom of page six on to seven?
I'll take that, yes, I'll take the six.
So for instance, for instance, the max height by ordinance is ten feet and twenty-four foot sign is proposed, correct?
Correct.
Do you know if that's the CBS or the Chase sign that's twenty-four feet up in there?
Both.
Both, okay.
It's a, it's a double padded sign and that the height of that sign is on par with the retail developments that we see at a corner to the site, including seven eleven, which has a goalpost sign, and the Speedway facility, which also has a, it's either a lollipop sign or a goalpost sign, I can't remember. including 7-Eleven, which has a goalpost sign, and the Speedway facility, which also has a, it's either a lollipop sign or a goalpost sign, I can't remember.
Okay, and then the type, uh, under max area, top of page seven, 24 square feet is the borough ordinance requirement, and the proposal's 126.6 square feet, correct?
Yes, again, that's for the, for the, the two brands, the two retail brands that are on the property.
And again, you need a variance for a couple inches as to max thi- thickness, there's a variance for the number of curb cuts, correct?
Correct.
There is a variance needed for the max number of signs, which the borough ordinance should indicate should be one per business, and one additional for a corner lot, and there are seven signs proposed?
Correct.
So, is it fair to say that the max number pursuant to borough ordinance would be three?
Yes.
One CBS, one chase, and you can put an extra one on the corner?
Yes.
Okay, so we have four more signs in our lot, correct?
Correct.
And the max area of the sign is 5% of the facade, and this has a proposal of signs on the side are not permitted, correct?
Correct.
Do the signs that are on the sides of the building, are they included in the calculation of seven signs that you need a variance for? Or is it seven plus the signs on the building are not permitted?
Inclusive.
It's inclusive, so it's kind of two for one on that one?
Yes.
Okay. And would you agree with me that with regards to the six sign variances, it would be pretty simple to design the signs to comply with the ordinance?
Again...
I understand from a marketing or a CBS or chase wants to hold out there...
The short answer to the factual question is absolutely, you just pull the signs off, it's a, it's a lesser project, the reason being, again, we have multiple vantage points, we happen to have a building that is parallel to a roadway, that is accessed from a parking lot internal to the site, so I think it strikes a good balance, we show the facade, rendering is very tasteful sign package, to have one sign facing Summer Hill Road, and one sign internal to the parking lot, they're navigation aids, they're not bawdy, they're not overbearing, they're not going to cause any substantial detriment to the area had those, those two signs impacted, as Brett said, it's in the interest of safety.
Okay, I understand the interest of safety, the signs that say, "Stop here," or "Merge," or "Direct traffic flow," how does a sign that says "Chase" or "CBS" on it help safety?
How about for, I'll, I'll, I'll pick a, an elderly person looking to find the, the entryway to the building on the CBS, the navigation aid from the roadway, the navigation aid from, from internal to the site as well, again, it just helps a person navigate through the site.
As opposed to the big building that just says CBS?
Well, again, that, that one sign doesn't face internal to the road.
Well, there's going to be a sign on the corner in your lot, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so your, your concern is someone would enter this property and without the four extra signs, might not know where they're going?
Well, the point is the roadside sign provides for roadside recognition, it identifies the property. The building signs identify or demarcate the buildings, we do have multiple buildings here, and again, this, these are just simple aids to help someone find the building when on the corner.
Well, I assume that the borough of East Brunswick, when they enacted the ordinance, is thoughtful of those things. Isn't one of the ideas behind planning is you also, when you're developing and looking for variances, you want to be as unobtrusive as possible?
Well, I, I think the answer is whenever we're looking at a variance condition, we look at better zoning alternative, we know, when we write these zone codes, we can't, can't catch everything. And in this particular circumstance, looking at the, the better zoning alternative, to have those two, two signs as opposed to one on the positive side benefits wayfinding, on the negative side, no substantial detriment, it's not going to look like it's overbranded, you're not going to see more than two signs for the most part from any one vantage point, each one of these signs provide for building recognition from a specific vantage point.
But as you just indicated, there's two signs from every vantage point, and essentially every building has four vantage points, so...
Well, no, for, for example, I think I'm, I'm losing my, oh, here we go, there's going to be one chase sign on the facade that faces Summer Hill Road, and there's going to be one chase sign that faces the parking lot where people are going, that's very reasonable, that's very practical from a, from a planning standpoint. There's not two signs on the, on the roadside portion of the facade, and there's not two signs on the other side, just two signs in total.
Is the sign really necessary, because I've seen the chase bank, I saw it from Summer Hill, I pulled in, now I need another sign on the other side, because I got lost?
Again, it just gives hierarchy proportion, it gives balance to the building itself, it serves no practical purpose to, to, to pull that sign out, it, it fits very nicely into the integrity of the building.
Okay, but would you agree with me if, if we designed the signs in compliance with the ordinance, it would be less obtrusive?
I don't agree with that.
Okay, so seven and three are the same?
The overall sign budget, the overall area of, of signage in terms of the building signage is the last thing that's contemplated under the zone scheme. It's a, it's a quantity relief that the applicant needs for breaking up those signs and placing them on, on different portions of the building.
I know you've, you've testified that you've appeared in front of lots of wards in lots of towns, correct?
We get to see a lot of these types of applications, yes.
There are many towns, and I can only speak from personal knowledge, where, um, for instance, while every Dunkin' Donuts looks the same, you go to certain towns and they have design standards and they don't need it in front of them, correct?
I need to get variances for the steam coming off the, the Dunkin' Donuts cup, yes, they're all different.
And again, this could be designed so that no sign variances were needed?
It, it's a factual question, the answer is yes, it could be designed with fewer signs, absolutely, in my view, it serves no practical planning purpose, it's a better zoning alternative with the package that the applicant has proposed.
Other than the six variances for signs, I think, with the total number of other variances that are required are, are seven, there's one for the 10-foot set pack versus zero that's proposed, I believe there are five for parking, there's the six for signs, there's one for, um, the building that has more units in it than the 20 in the lot, I think it's, it 25 is proposed, and then, I think there's one, that's 13, and I think the 14th would be, you need a variance for the roof design, I think that was discussed?
Again, we addressed that, the determinations that the lift was actually not needed in that regard, that the, and that was dealt with through our, through our architect.
Okay, so no variances needed, the site design was, okay, so 13 total variances, six for signs, seven deal with the other issues, plus there's one for lighting.
I don't, I don't count, I didn't count them all, I know there's a bundle of relief related to the parking, and I'll, I'll say to the bulk of the project, and then there's a, a bundle of, of sign variances, but again, I know of no case out there that says, once you get a certain amount of variances, you've, you've reached that tipping point where the application should be...
You're, you're absolutely right, I'm not trying to suggest that, what I'm just trying to do is get a handle, since the project has changed, I'm just trying to put my hands around this and make sure the members of the public in the court are, what exactly we're looking for, so that's what I'm just trying, and you're the planner, you're offering testimony as to why the variances need to, should be granted, in your opinion, so I'm just trying to get a handle on...
And, and I'm not trying to be argumentative, your, your list is accurate, I don't dispute your list.
Plus, but at the top of those 13, then there's the one for lighting, because the building mounted light.
Which we just heard about, yes, whether that's a variance or a design exception, I think it's actually under the lower standard of a design exception, not a, not a variance.
And again, well, this is a factual question, not a, in your opinion as a planner question, as I asked the other experts, this plan, this development could be designed, I believe, in such a manner that no variances would be required, correct?
The, the, the factual answer is, is yes, the qualified answer is, that would not meet the spirit of the ordinance, which actually says in the very lengthy preamble to the, to the zone plan, that there should be support or the encouragement of support retail uses for the, the residential development, that's actually cooked right into the preamble, I didn't write it, it's, it's in the...
But, but again, the intent goal is to have a mixed use, to also have a mixed use that works on a particular site.
Yes, and, and as I said before, all the indicators of the size ability to accommodate the use are met here. Not only is the use compliant, but all those higher tiers, I spoke about them before, the coverage, the floor area, on and on, the parking, all meet the ordinance requirement.
If, but would you agree with me if no variances were needed, that there would no, there would be no need to do an analysis of the negative criteria or the impact, correct?
From a, from a statutory standpoint, yes, but that, again, that's not the way we, we deal with variance applications, whether a variance-free application could be accommodated, it's whether one is better than the other.
Well, I mean, isn't it always the goal in planning to try and design projects so that no variances are needed? And obviously there are kinds of design projects, and there are variances that are needed for reasons that you've testified to, that's why we require expert testimony.
The, the answer is absolutely not, they, that section 70 has remained in the law from, from day one, it has not gone away, even after Pizzoman and, and all the other cases, it has not gone away, um, again, we look at, we look at balancing, and I think this applicant has put great care into this project to, to strike a balance, to, to meet the town's obligations for affordable housing, well, being sensitive to the, to the people who have been here and expressed interest in, in this project, it's, planning is all about balance, and this, this applicant has done a very good job of, of striking that balance.
Now, in furtherance of the application, um, you testified that pursuant to 40, code 55D dash two, there's 15 criteria set forth in the statute, um, that you look at as terms of the positive criteria, correct?
Yes.
And if my memory serves me, in furtherance of the positive criteria, you testified that A was met, which is to promote the public health, safety, um, moral and general welfare, correct?
I actually testified that all of them were met, especially A and a few others.
Okay, but I mean, some of them have nothing to do with this project at all, I mean, it calls about a planned housing communities and some other stuff. I mean, you pointed out three, that's all I can...
Yeah, we can go through those, yes.
Okay, so you, you pointed out A, correct?
I did point out the promotion of the general welfare, yes.
Okay, how does the sign variances promote the general welfare?
Sign variances promote clear and safe identification of sites, safety is, is paramount, those of us who do this every single night are always concerned about public safety.
Okay, and again, I understand with regards to strict direction of signs, but your testimony is that the signs identifying the commercial entities are needed for the public safety, that's your testimony?
The signs that are, are provided for the retail commercial entities provide navigation aids, visual cues, and not necessarily limited to advertising personnel.
And then you testified as to I, which is to promote a desirable visual environment through creative development, um, and good civic design, correct?
Correct.
Okay, now, is it still your testimony that the variances for sign and lighting are promoting a desirable visual environment?
They are, uh, again, the, the illumination, importantly, it came out of Brett's testimony, what happens at the edge is key, and the fact that there is no glare exceeding the ordinance requirement at the edge of the property is, is paramount towards, towards that conclusion. They're going to be sharp cutoffs, they're not going to, particularly with the homes along Old Stage Oak, create objectionable glare that spills over onto those roofs. Likewise, for the signs, these are not signs that are going to be staring in the face of those residents across the street.
Would you agree with me that the borough's design standards are adopted by the Borough Council in order to reflect what the residents of East Brunswick believe, the desirable vision of life?
They are design standards, they are, they are rules that have been established, again...
To reflect from the Borough Council's adoption of them, assuming Africa residents want.
I'm not going to argue that, all ordinances are created in the interest of the public health, safety, and, and welfare, but again, from a planning standpoint, paint ordinances with a very broad brush, and, and we look at individual sites with a very fine to comb, and that's what we've done here.
Now, you also, um, pointed out N, which is an efficient use of the light, correct?
Yes.
And again, big picture, you're taking an underutilized office space, and you're utilizing it for affordable housing, I think we can all agree that's a more efficient use of the property, correct?
That, and not only the fact that the property is underutilized now, it's not fully occupied as, as we know, and it's, it's not fulfilling the, I'll say, the economic development intent of the zone and the fact that it is being underutilized.
I'm actually agreeing, affordable housing is a more efficient use than what's there, correct?
Yes.
Okay, um, would you also agree with me that if you did not have the CBS and the chase bank, that just in affordable housing, you would still have testified it was a more efficient use than the vacant office building?
I would say it's, it's, on a, on a graduated scale, it has less efficiency not to have those supportive retail components on this property, force people to get in their car and go elsewhere for those, I'll say amenities, for those assistance and courtesy, that's what we do.
But again, if you were here testifying as a four residential affordable housing builders, okay, take out the commercial residential, I mean, the commercial builders, right, your testimony would still be that M applies, correct? N doesn't go away just because it's affordable housing, it's still better than what's there, correct?
Yes, to a lesser degree, yes.
And again, while that might be more efficient, you don't need any of the variances that are proposed to argue that M applies?
I don't need any of the variances that are proposed to argue that, all, all of the relief that the applicant is seeking is necessary to effectuate this beneficial project that actually has an inherently beneficial component of affordable housing, they're all intertwined, case law is pretty clear, we look at the application as a whole, so, if, if the answer to your question was, do the purposes of zoning still get advanced if that belief goes away? My answer may be yes, but certainly to a lesser degree, it's all tied together.
So, with your testimony, it would be yes, but not as strongly yes?
My testimony is that those purposes of zoning are less advanced by a project that is purely a, a residential project.
I realize this is semantics, it's less advanced still means it's advanced, just not to the same degree, correct?
At the end of the day, it is all balancing, it's not just a matter of if it advances the purposes of zoning, but it's weighted against that negative criteria as well.
And as, and as you discussed, with regards to the plan, the affordable housing component is considered inherently beneficial, correct?
The affordable housing component, yes.
Okay, um, so, when you're looking at the positive criteria, that comes into play as one of the positive criteria, correct?
That adds weight on, on the positive side of the set.
And there's a council on affordable housing, so obviously statewide, this is considered inherently beneficial.
Yeah, the, the only correction is it's now in the hands of the political, so I, I understand what you're saying.
Used to be, it was... Okay, um, is there anything inherently beneficial to the community of East Brunswick as it relates to another bank?
It's all tied, it's all tied together, it's all part and parcel, if, if you're asking us a bank inherently beneficial, the short answer is no, I'm not going to argue with you.
Like, for instance, affordable housing is inherently beneficial, hospitals are inherently beneficial, schools, churches, banks, so on and on.
And, correct, the short answer is yes, I never made the point that applies.
This is, uh, we're not dealing with the use variance. Well, I, I understand, I just, I don't want to confuse you. I have a couple more questions, that's okay, and you would agree there's nothing inherently beneficial about another pharmacy?
No, I would agree that pharmacy serves the public.
You are aware, are you, did you do any analysis to have any pharmacies or in East Brunswick?
It's not a use variance, I didn't...
You don't want, just?
I did not.
Okay, I can understand if there was no pharmacies within 40 miles and this addressed the need, it's not your testimony that, that a pharmacy here is addressing a need that is somehow preventing the positive criteria, is it?
Sure, this is going to be a, a man-new pharmacy, whenever, even if there were a saturation, consumer wins, the consumer is going to pick the best facility, and this is a new state...
I think the CVS in East Brunswick would be...
Again, it's all about convenience, it's about, it's about choice, it provides choice.
That's all I have, thank you very much. I don't have anything further with regards to Mr. Hillman or his, uh, experts, I don't know if he wants to... I don't know if he wants to, do I redirect that as to any of them?
So basically, Mr. Himmlerman, I guess, would have the opportunity to redirect any of the cross-examination of his witnesses. Once he rests, then you have a direct case as well.
Well, I have three witnesses I plan on calling that I don't think will be, we'll get out of here in the meantime, so to tell them on it, so...
So, Mr. Himmlerman, do you have any...
I just had a couple questions, but I don't have any other questions for any of my other witnesses.
All right, that's fine.
With regard to the usable open space issue, it's my understanding that you indicated that under the definition of open space, the 150-foot buffer should be calculated or incorporated in that calculation, is that correct?
Yes.
So the applicant saw no reason to do a calculation without including 150-foot buffers, is that your understanding?
Correct, the application complies.
With regard to the project as a whole, you've indicated that this is a natural product, correct?
Yes.
And this was part of an inclusionary site within the housing on Lehighs' Road?
Yes, it was.
As part of settlement, co-s settlement that the county sponsor entered into with the plaintiffs in that case, correct?
Correct.
With regard to the, with regard to the ball variance, is it fair to say that in the context of a natural or the inclusionary sites or projects, that those variances are typically viewed both like under case law and under your professional opinion as a plan, that they are deliberately construed in the board's deliberation of those granted that way?
Exactly, and again, the case on point is the pull-in case, P-U-L-L-E-N. Just look at the application as a whole, particularly when considering those ball variances, it's all tied together.
And you've indicated that this is not a use variance case, correct?
It is not.
So you wouldn't, your testimony in the planning analysis did not review and provide that analysis, as you do in the use variance, correct?
That's correct, there is not any identified amenity for any of those uses with perhaps the only exception of affordable housing, which the applicant is providing.
Okay, thank you very much.
It's not that anybody...
This limited, limited to...
No, no, I guess my question is, does the Borough Planner agree with the analysis? And so I don't know, because the planning review originally said it defined it one way, and the testimony has been, it's defined another way, and I'm just curious if the Borough Planner agrees with that analysis or not, because I think the board just needs to know if there's a variance for usable space needed or not.
Well, we have reviewed the plan, and we did initially have a concern with the term usable open space. We since have reviewed the definitions and did a supplemental site visit specifically to look at that buffer area that's in question. And after that site visit, it was clear that there are existing well-defined paths that connect to the Frostwoods Park, which would make this buffer area, in effect, a usable amenity. So it's not just a buffer, it's in, with the inclusion of the paths, it becomes a amenity which then falls into the usable open space area. And I'll defer to Mika if she has additional comments or wants to clarify this.
I mean, again, as John clarified, we did look at all the definitions of, and the fact that usable open space was what was required under the ordinance. We have since then looked at what the ordinance further clarifies what usable open space should include, landscape areas or any kind of scientific areas. We looked at the buffer, the buffer does offer trails which could be used as a scientific entity that are usable open space. And given that definition, we do agree to include the buffer area in the usable open space calculation, which needs to be required.
Okay, is that just the buffer area to the north, or did that then include everything to the west?
I think the entire buffer area, the north and the western, to include trails.
The western does, yes, as you...
Yes.
Okay.
All right, so, Mr. Barlow, at this point, and Mr. Himmlerman, you have no further questions, right?
Correct.
Right, so Mr. Barlow, if you want to go along with your direct case now with your three witnesses now.
Okay, I'm calling this as, as my first witness.
He's ready to write in, he swore, he swore to tell me sure to call yourself, you got it?
I do.
State your name, spell your last name, tell us who you are.
Marcy Mattis, M-A-R-C-I-E, M-A-T-T-I-S, 32 Francis Road, East Brunswick, New Jersey.
As you just indicated, you live at 32 Francis, correct?
I do.
And as part of both the original zoning application and this application, you got a notice of course you reside in the 200 feet area?
That is correct.
Now, you live at 32 Francis with your husband, correct?
That's correct.
You have children that have gone through the school system and grown?
Yes, they have two sons who went through the entire school system.
Did they take the buses to the street?
They did.
And how many different schools did they attend while they were in case or twelve?
Each of my sons went to elementary school, and then middle school, and then junior high school, and then high school, so four schools each.
So, four separate buses?
Yes.
Each morning?
Yes.
And when they got dropped off, four separate buses dropped them off?
That's correct.
Is there also a late bus for the high school?
There is, and I think there's also a late bus for the junior high school.
So somewhere between eight to 12 bus trips on a daily basis to pick up your children?
Correct.
If they went to four different schools?
Okay.
Theoretically, for this residential component, this, based on the fact that you live on the right property, the students here will attend four different schools, correct?
That's correct.
And they will take four different buses to the school in the morning?
Correct.
And they will come home on four different buses?
Correct.
And potentially there may be late buses that come on the side.
Correct.
Can you describe, now you live on Francis where it comes out on Old Stage, correct?
That's correct.
Can you prescribe to me the traffic conditions as it relates to exiting on Old Stage at current hours?
Well, it would depend on the time of day. I work from home most days, so if I want to leave my house after 9:30, that's fine. It's a disaster trying to get out of Francis onto Old Stage Road, to come out of Francis and make that left during the morning rush hour, and absolutely it's a disaster from basically 3:30 in the afternoon to about 6:00 PM.
Exiting?
Exiting, again, making a left onto Old Stage Road.
On the other occasions where you, you said afterward, you made a right?
Just this afternoon. Actually, I'll either make a right, or I will line my way through my neighborhood to get to where I'm going without having to try to get onto Old Stage Road.
Since that, Monday through Friday?
Yes.
How are the traffic conditions on Saturday and Sunday?
They're not as bad.
What concerns do you have about the proposed development?
I have a lot of concerns. First of all, I think it's just shameful that we're basically chopping down 65 feet of what everyone here had at one point, at one point assumed was Frostwoods, but we learned two and a half years ago that it wasn't. That 65 feet worth of trees are being chopped down, and that's just shameful. I'm concerned that basically what we're trying to do is shove 10 pounds of you-know-what in a two-pound bag. Maybe at this point it's not 10 pounds of it, there are only eight pounds of it, but it's still trying to shove eight pounds of it into a two-pound bag. It is going to be a congested little area. I am a firm believer in affordable housing. I'm an attorney, I once worked for Legal Services of New Jersey. I know that local people need housing, they need it desperately. But this is monstrosity. This isn't just for affordable housing, this is maximization of profits. And I understand as developers, that's your right, but you sit there and you think you're creating Mr. Rogers' neighborhood for us, and you're creating a disaster. There are going to be traffic accidents on Summerhill Road, well, you'll be long gone by then, but there will be accidents, and hopefully not fatalities, but that's a possibility. I understand the traffic report came back that, oh, there won't be, you know, significant change. That's because it's horrible right now. It's going to remain horrible, it's going to get worse. I just think the whole thing is just sad. I wish two and a half years ago, when I went and got the zoning notice, that I knew that this is a possibility. But planning and all that, that's not my area of expertise. And I'm mad at myself for not doing the research and seeing that this is a possibility. And I hope that our town has learned from this. I mean, we're not a small town, but we're a charming town still. We have people who care about each other, we have beautiful parks, and we have to protect them, and we have to be more active protecting them. This is a disaster, and I know there's nothing that can be done to stop it, and I'm just sad about the whole thing. Since 2000.
As a resident of East Brunswick the last 18 years, did you ever feel that you were underutilized or underserved in the commercial banking opportunities?
No, in fact, every morning I drive to go swimming, and there's a new mall across from Downman Road, and there's an empty bank stall there. And there's an empty bank, if you drive up Summerhill Road, there's another empty bank. And there are lots of banks that aren't empty, we don't need this.
Have you ever felt as a resident for the last 18 years that you were underserved in the area, that you really didn't get form to supervise?
Nope, that's pretty easy too, I can go right over to Chuck Wright if I have a headache. I mean, saving myself 100 feet is really not going to be necessary.
Also providing...
There is. Yep.
That's all I have.
No, I just think the whole thing is very sad.
She don't have any cross?
No.
Okay, next witness.
I'll call Kathleen Decker.
He's ready to write in, he swore, he swore to tell me sure to call yourself, you got it?
I do.
State your names, spell your last name, tell us who you are.
I'm Kathleen Decker, D-E-C-K-E-R, and I live in East Jefferson Road, East Brunswick.
All right, you did read the jail? You said you lived in East Jefferson, correct?
Absolutely.
No, not you, me. East Jefferson's approximately 2,500 feet from the proposed development, correct?
That's right.
Now, you heard Ms. Mattis' testimony with regards to the fact that four different schools are serviced in this area, correct?
Yes, that's true.
And how long have you lived in East Jefferson?
21 years.
Before that, where did you live?
On the underside of Old Stage Road. I've lived in the neighborhood since 1972.
Where is Frostwood?
In the neighborhood, right up Old Stage Road on Irving Avenue, so between Summerhill and Old Stage.
Which you can get to by walking to Hell of Out?
Yeah, I grew up in the area and remember when it was all woods, cried when the insurance company went out.
And your kids went to, you had kids that went to the school system?
East Brunswick, that's right.
And again, as Ms. Mattis testified to...
They went to school together, Frost to Churchill, Churchill to High School.
Plus all four, the bus back?
That's right.
So again, on this property, 96 residential units?
See if it says remind me, make it an hour, and then, yeah, four, right, click, there you go. And then just say, that's it. Sorry.
So, kids from this area, I think, to be serviced by buses coming in and out to go to four different schools, so four different bus routes, correct?
That's right.
As a person who doesn't live within the 200-foot radius, what concerns do you have about the proposed development?
Well, I echo everything that Marcy said, but I suppose if we start from the reverse, the fact that you weren't within 200 feet meant that when you changed the zoning, we didn't get notified, which meant that we couldn't be part of the process at the very, very beginning, and that is not only shameful, because I don't think our best practices were served by the people who represent us, but shame on all of us that are in this room that aren't looking at the agendas. But we're much, this process has made us much more educated, we are attending meetings, and we know better. So there's a sadness, a deep sadness. But in a practical matter, I mean, this is a very difficult corner now. We did hear from the traffic folks, the traffic will be worse, not better. We're supposed to be satisfied with that, we're not. I think that it's a travesty that the trees are coming down and that we can so easily dismiss the idea of the encroachment on the woods, because while this product is here, it's much easier to make variances and make allowances once you begin them. And I think the other part about the CBS and the Chase, while I agree that none of this should be here and that we're trying to squeeze too much and put something terribly dense on an already difficult corner, the fact of the matter is that iconic brands, whether they come in or come out, and it isn't just necessarily a bank, but it's a Home Depot, it's David's Bridals on the 18th, it's The Gap, iconic brands do go out as it serves the brand. And I personally think that having empty space on this lot is just, it's just like... I'll be at every zoning board meeting from now until the end of my days. I was, I'm going to go now, you'll see me again.
I do.
Yeah.
Do you have any concerns, realizing that East Jefferson actually, the traffic could impact your...
Oh, it does already impact me, and it's going to get worse, and I really feel terrible about my spots of neighbors, but because I grew up in Spotswood, I know the town so well, that when I cannot make the left on Old Stage and make the right, then I go down that road, I can cut through Spotswood, which is what everybody in the town does.
So you're going to make a concern after a total of 100 square meters of open space?
Yes.
Mr. Sack, I just have a couple of questions.
Okay.
Question, you indicated that when the township rezoned the property back in 2016, you were not aware of that rezonable ordinance, is that correct?
That's right.
Were you aware at the time before the township council adopted that, would the rezoning of the property, that residents on Francis Road in the west from the town could be 150-foot buffer maintained?
No, I didn't, I didn't know about any of the rezoning until the beginning of this process.
So you weren't aware that the council adopted the ordinance on 150-foot buffer until you...
Until that was announced, that's exactly right, after that was announced, that's right.
With regard to the, to the 150-foot buffer, is that something that you're generally in favor of?
As opposed to no buffer, sure.
So you think that's positive, the township adopted that ordinance, created that also, correct?
I, yes, I mean, the short answer, in the same way, is actually, yes, the buffer's a good thing. Practically, no, the whole project stinks.
Hey, Mrs., were you aware that the township council had a public hearing when they both rezoned the property and also were considering conservation use for that buffer?
You're exaggerating, no, I didn't, and shame on me, because these things are now available on agendas, and I know that they have to be posted in the home news. But of course, the way that they're posted in the home news is not exactly of awareness. I do think that if, if, if we got, if it was on social media, or some other way, rather than maybe just the paper, that would be better. But no, you're right, shame on me, but we're a lot more educated now that we've gone through this process than we were. Certainly, legal on both sides of this have had some frustration, I think, with the public, because we don't know what you know. But we're learning, and we need more knowledge than we did.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
Mr. Himmlerman asked you if you were happy with the buffer. You did hear testimony that even with the buffer, streets are still being cut down. You understand that, correct?
I absolutely understand that.
How do you feel about the water area being decreased as the water is running out of here?
I could cry about it.
My last witness, I would call Mr. Spicuzzo.
He's ready to write in, he swore, he swore to tell me sure to call yourself, you got it?
I do.
You state your name, spell your last name.
I'm Spicuzzo, S-P-I-C-U-Z-Z-O, 276 Madison Avenue, Spotswood. Mr. Spicuzzo, how long have you lived in Spotswood? I've been in Spotswood for 40 of my 42 years, and the other two years I've been self-managed. Well, I guess. Well, I guess.
Well, it's a pleasure.
So, you currently have a council residence in Spotswood, correct?
Correct.
And before that, you served four years on the Spotswood council, correct?
Correct.
Is it fair to say that in your forty, your forty-two years, you're very familiar with the intersection of Summer Hill and Old Stage Road?
Yes.
Fair to say you've been very familiar with traffic and how it backs up on that intersection?
Yes.
Would, would you say it's a fair statement that over the last four years, the amount of cars that you see utilizing the brick-and-mortar property has increased over time?
Yes, absolutely.
And as, as a matter of fact, it was much...
Correct.
And it's my understanding that given the request of the Spotswood Police Department for any police reports relative to accidents that occurred in the area of the intersection of Summer Hill and Old Stage Road, correct?
That's correct.
And it's my understanding that they provide you all the accident reports for that intersection for two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen, through May of two thousand eighteen, correct?
That's correct.
And I understand you're not here as a traffic expert, but did you count all hundred-and-nine reports and you broke them up by year, correct?
That's correct.
Eight hundred and nine reports, right?
Plus or minus, yes, one or minus, I counted them.
Okay. We only have one copy right now, Mr. Himmelman, I am happy to make a copy or multiple copies to give them to the board by the night. The package should just be marked as exhibit O one, and I'm happy to...
I'll check.
Yeah, I'll check.
O two. And so if, if it's your pleasure, Mr. Sacks, I can scan and email it to you and to Mr. Himmelman, so you won't have complete sets, is that okay? Now, in, do you have a breakdown of how many accidents were due from your, or should you review of the hundred-and-nine accident reports for the last thirty years?
Yes, I do.
How does it break down?
In two thousand fifteen, there was twenty-four, sixteen, there was thirty-seven, seventeen, there was thirty-four, and from January, May, eighteen, there was fourteen.
The hundred-and-nine accidents were in a half-years, right?
Correct.
If there was accident there today?
There was, Lord, they killed a motorcycle, luckily, a woman. Nothing serious.
As a longtime resident of Spotswood and also as now a council president, what is your feeling with regards to the proposed development?
Well, I think traffic is gonna be horrendous, even worse than it is now. As the state actually makes a right out of the house and cuts through Spotswood, the traffic on Main Street in Spotswood is horrendous as it is. So now we're just being choked, we are the small community next door, and we're just being choked on two sides. I also have a personal thing with the cut through, because I grew up out of that town, which is the cut through from Old Stage to Main Street. And the traffic, and I'm just one block over from that town, and the traffic is just getting a lot worse. Not even just the two-way street, because all the side streets roll children, hard time playing rugby. And it's just, it's not gonna be pretty.
I'm sure there is before, but the hundred-and-nine police reports that you were given, those are just the ones from, provided by the Spotswood Police Department during that three-year and five-month timeframe, correct?
That's correct.
I'm not gonna put you on the spot, approximately, how many people live in Spotswood?
Eighty-three to eighty-five hundred.
Okay. And, Mr. Himmelman, I believe you're speaking slightly more than forty-eight thousand people.
That's right.
So in a town of eighty-three hundred people, there were a hundred-and-nine police reports generated by the Spotswood Police Department?
Correct.
But as I said, I'll provide tomorrow, I'll be some one hundred and nine of yours in open terms.
Mr. Himmelman, any other questions?
I have a couple of questions, nice to see you, council president. Is Mr. Ball representing you personally in this, in this matter?
He's not.
Are you here on behalf of the borough of Spotswood, representing the borough as a representative?
I'm here as a resident of Spotswood and as a representative of the residents of Spotswood voting.
Okay, I have no further questions.
Thank you.
Thank you, council. Always nice to see you.
Mr. Ball, do you want to, that concludes your case, right?
I don't have any further witnesses, I just have a brief closing statement.
Please go ahead.
Chairman Taylor, members of the planning board, as I stand before you, I'm reminded of the immortal words of the Grateful Dead, "Where long strength, sugar, is bade." You have been through multiple meetings, there's still another meeting to go. This started for many of the people in this room in front of the zoning board, where the initial meeting in this room had to be canceled because it holds approximately four hundred odd people, and six or seven hundred people show up. As often happens in these applications, unfortunately, sometimes the public gets worn out, since they're not volunteer members of the board, they're not paid professionals, and unpaid professional. So, still, for any other application that didn't start off with six or seven hundred people, a room this filled is a lot of people coming out for an application, especially on the sixth or seventh meeting. On November sixteenth, two thousand sixteen, this board, the order, the zoning ordinance, and this board was told by Mr. Palkowski, "I don't envision somebody coming in here with just a residential development, that's not what they're going to do. It's going to be a mixed-use development, I envision maybe a daycare center with some townhouses," or something like that. So at that point, if we have issues, if we feel there's too many units, and the traffic doesn't work, we'll recommend that report and reduce things of that nature. And it can be denied based upon that. Well, here we are, two and a half years later, and this board is still concerned, because this board was concerned then that Pandora's Box would be open. And I would submit to you that the box has been open, and that's why hundreds of people have come to these meetings. And this is not an issue about affordable housing. I don't want you to think that that's why we're here, is we have some objection to affordable housing. And I'm not here to argue against that. I think I could offer you, though, a very effective argument that the issue isn't affordable housing, it's the choice of this spot for both the affordable housing and the commercial. And I think everyone has agreed, as we've gone through the process, that while it is zoned for it, it is ill-suited for it. It's one of the busiest intersections and just lends itself to be a very poor choice for this type of zoning. Now, Mr. Himmelman adds that he will argue it's a permitted use. Well, I will argue, and my funding was kind of stolen, it's ten pounds of sausage and five pounds of kaiser. And that's the real error or problem there. It's a permitted use, so make the applicant build a completely conforming application. As Seth Worth in Tops, which Mr. Sacks takes out of the Bible of land use, in section twenty-nine, three point three, it's notable that undue hardship is not a requirement for the grant of variances under C two. That's what we're dealing with, C two variances. What must be shown is that the applicant one refers to a specific piece of property. I can see that. Two, that the purposes of the municipal land use law would be advanced by a deviation from the zoning ordinance requirement. I don't think anything's advanced by varied or granted variance in this case. I don't need seven signs to find this chase or this CBS. That the variances given granted without substantial detriment to the public good. Hundreds of people have come to several meetings to tell you that this is a detriment to what they perceive as residents of both East Brunswick and Spotswood as a detriment to the public good. That the benefits of any variances, deviation would substantially outweigh the detriment. Like the benefits of the deviation would substantially outweigh any detriment. I will see, and I don't think it's been proven before you, that the detriments are outweighed by the benefits. Five, that the variances will not substantially impair the intended purposes of zone plan and zoning ordinance. What we have to consider is this isn't a zone that has been in place for decades, and maybe has outlived its usefulness, we gotta grant some variances. This is the very first application dealing with a brand-new zone. So why grant variances? Let's see if the zone, as zone, can work with a conforming application. Under a C two, the question is whether the grant of the variances would promote or advance the purposes of the act and the benefits of such deviation would outweigh any detriment. As I indicated, I don't believe that's been proven. And the example that's often used, and it's used in Tops, is that if a hospital applies for a variance from a fifty-foot setback requirement to construct a multi-level parking garage five feet from the property line and the adjacent residential area, the fact that the hospital's inherently beneficial should not affect the applicant's obligation to show either a hardship under C one or the elements required under C two, as I already indicated. The purpose of the yard setbacks is to protect the adjoining properties from intrusions of sound, light, we've heard testimony about light, this is four times brighter than it needs to be per se to your ordinance, glare, and other objectionable factors. Can anyone else come out and talk to you about the traffic? And the grant of variances under either C one or C two should be carefully considered, independent of whether the proposed principal or accessory use of the property is inherently beneficial or not. So what it says is, you can look at the residential and say, yes, inherently beneficial, but the other parts of this, whether it's a parking event, or a CBS, or a bank, that's where your focus should be with regards to the grant of the variances. The reason we've heard about Lights Village and the strange placement of handicapped spots, and a myriad of traffic concerns, and the need for, I can't keep track, I think it's about fourteen variances, is besides, is because besides this inherently beneficial housing, we have a bank and a CBS. Why not have a pizzeria and go for the holy trifecta of New Jersey development?
Hey, can you, can you nail someone?
Nail someone, I could use a why. Affordable housing is important. People sue over it, judges write decisions about it, and there's a council, there was a council on affordable housing. The last I checked, there's no council on affordable banks. There's no council on affordable pharmacies. Affordable bank, that's an oxymoron. Their own experts have told you that you can design this project with no variances if they wanted to. They don't want to, because it will limit the profit of building up. I submit to you that they have not proven that the negative criteria outweigh, they haven't shown that the positive criteria outweigh the negative criteria. You don't need to grant the variances, you don't need to grant variances for signings, and lights, and parking. This borough has a council that an active ordinance is to reflect the community standings of what you want built and where. And in this particular spot, they decided affordable housing should be done. But hold the applicant to the ordinance and the standards of this community. I've heard they want to be a good neighbor, pre-design it with no variances. Don't worry about the commercial, focus on the inherently beneficial part. Now, I, I thank you for your patience throughout this process, both with me, the residents who have spoken, my clients, it may not have seemed that way, but honestly, and everyone I've talked to. Thank you, thank you for your patience, thank you for the questions you ask, thank you for the ideas you had. Keep telling everybody, they're not made to be here. You're here because you're volunteers, you're here because you have the best interest of your community at heart. And I would ask, I mean, you do eventually consider this, and consider all the variances that have been passed. The housing can be done, and the mandates met, without the benefits and the needed, the unneeded commercial progress. So again, I thank you, and we have our clients, I thank you, and we have the residents of East Brunswick and Spotswood, I thank you.
That concludes the objectors case. We still have this evening of public portion, that's a good time. So, again, this will probably be the last large public portion we have. If you have anything to say, get a look at Jess now. My first report's raising your egg. But you know, please, very good, you're actually, I can remind you that you are... Just state your name.
Oh, okay. I'm Cheryl Bass, B is in bankrupt, A is in affiliation, S S as in soup and salad. And I have been up here before. I had asked about the traffic. Tonight, we got from the Spotswood Police Department the package of accidents that happened at this four-corner intersection. I had asked about the East Brunswick-Spotswood traffic accidents. The planning board, and I know that the traffic expert is not here, because he was here last time, and we were told he would not be coming back. You should have had that package for East Brunswick.
Well, and Spotswood, if the Spotswood Police Department did not review this application, East Brunswick Police Department did review this application.
And I am aware that the Spotswood Police Department gave the information to the East Brunswick Police Department, because it was requested for this meeting.
My only point is that the East Brunswick Police Department has, I don't want the impression to go out that the East Brunswick Police Department did not review this application as to that intersection.
I am aware of that.
And they signed your file.
I had gone to the East Brunswick Police Department, I had requested the police reports of the accidents. That information I have to file for as a public record, because the number of accidents is public information. I'm not a lawyer, I'm not a town council person. The information would be not relevant to anything, to come up with a number, or the number of accidents would not be anything that I'm an expert on.
Nor would I be, so, for example, if you were to tell me a hundred and nine, I have no clue, is a hundred and nine high, is it low? How does that compare to Tyson's and Ryder, how does that compare? So that's why the experts are fine, East Brunswick Police Department, there's no better, with all due respect to my friends in Spotswood. They have looked at this application and had some questions, asked a bunch of questions, got answers, and said, "This is a safe intersection." That's what I rely on. So for me to have a hundred and nine number, even I've chaired this board for twenty years, I don't know the context in which that is. I, it's not, I rely on my experts. When I have, when I have a legal problem, I'm not deterred. I go to my friend since the seventh grade, Larry Sacks. Larry, what do you think? He tells me. In this, I go to the police department, "Men, women, you know he's better than you guys, what do you think?" And they came back and told me through the planning board that this, this intersection, is it congested? Yes, congested like, you know, like crazy. But as designed, is it safe? And they tell me, yes. So I rely on their, on their expertise, they've never steered me the wrong way.
I appreciate that, Mr. Taylor. In reply, in getting the reply from the East Brunswick Police, I did further research, asking people familiar with this intersection, East Brunswick-Spotswood, what the opinion was of those people who are familiar. Is this a busy four-corner intersection with accidents, a lot of accidents? And the answer was, yes. I'm not an expert, so I do not have analysis to give you. But the answer from people familiar with accidents that have taken place, that they have been in accidents at one of these four corners, the answer is, yes, this is a four-corner intersection that has a lot of accidents, East Brunswick.
You don't know that, Mike.
Okay, and I say again, I am not an expert. Just looking to do some research.
I just, when it comes to public safety, I, I rant a little when anecdotal evidence gets spreadish back. East Brunswick Police Department...
has said that this is a safe intersection. Doesn't mean it's not crowded. I live in that, at the postal, I work by condo. You want to pull your hair out when you're there? No doubt about it. But I don't want to go after that it's not safe.
My other question, when I was asking about the traffic, I was asking about the right-hand turn onto Old Stage Road, coming out of the complex and going onto Old Stage Road. I had asked people very familiar with Cranberry Road, where the Wexford housing is. They also have that when you make the right turn, there is some type of obfuscation there, whether it's concrete or how to turn, that you can only make the right-hand turn. And I was told there'll be a sign there, there'll be concrete there, whatever it is, so that you make a right-hand turn. At the Wexford, there are many people, they turn to the right to get their car out, but then they turn to the left to go the other way on Cranberry Road. So even though there is a sign, even though there is concrete there, the accidents do occur on Cranberry.
Once again, we'll let our traffic police department know you're very good at it.
Right. My other question is this. When Mr. Manoya was telling us that Matt Calley was liquidating this piece of property, I do believe he did not say in his testimony that other pieces of property in East Brunswick were looked at for building three, building four buildings, including affordable housing and building two commercial properties. Were other properties in East Brunswick looked at in order to build four residential buildings and two pieces of commercial property?
First of all, your time is up, all right? So I'm going to cut you off. But, Mr. Hemmelman, if your client can answer that question, I'm not sure it's really relevant. And is the question as to this developer only or is it to any other developer?
With all due respect, Mr. Taylor did take up quite a bit of my five minutes.
I'll give you.
I'll tell you I'm a little hurt.
I'll give you another thirty seconds.
Again. I don't know.
Mr. Sachs, we don't see, the applicant doesn't see a reason to answer that question. We don't see a problem.
Is that it?
I'll end there.
Thank you.
Anyone else want you to be heard? The woman in the back there? Can I raise a seat? Please raise your right hand. You scored, you scored a thousand. Tell them you're going to go through some government. State your name. Spell your last name and tell us.
I'm in Chalice, E.L.L.A. Love, Janus Drive, Spotswood. Couple of things that have not been, and I don't know if they will be answered. I do live off of Old Stage Road, not too far from the corner of this intersection. Do we have any idea how long this project is going to take from the time they store all those injuries to the time that they have their roof open opening?
I don't know. I mean, they could maybe give you estimates.
You would say approximately two to three years?
Okay, so. I know at the last meeting I had asked a question regarding construction vehicles. Like I said, I live on that corner. So for two to three years, I'm going to have to deal with construction trucks going past my house back and forth daily on a weight-limited road. Because it was explained to me that because they are delivering two property on that road, that they're going to be able to go back and forth on Old Stage Road from eight o'clock in the morning till eight o'clock in the morning.
The weight limitation applies 24/7. So those heavy vehicles will not be allowed to go on some on Old Stage Road. If they are, there will be police enforcement. I can't, and I think I mentioned this last time. Could a stray vehicle go down Old Stage Road? Of course it can. The stray vehicles in excess of 30,000 pounds, going down, they do it all the time.
They do it day and night.
But.
Yeah, a lot of it. And I can see the traffic drones going down Old Stage Road.
As part of this project, if this application is acted favorably, the applicant will have to come up with a construction schedule. And that will indicate in writing as to the direction that these trucks are going to be traveling, what times they're going to be doing, et cetera. So actually, the township does have an additional measure of enforcement because of that destruction.
And will that be made public? Will I be able to say about this?
Okay, it's a public matter, yeah.
Okay. Now, we would talk, and this has gone back again, talking about having three trash containers. So does that mean that there's going to be a refuse truck coming in there every day to pick up their containers? And will it be coming down Old Stage Road?
Unlikely every day.
Probably not.
Unlikely every day.
And again, if it's in excess of 30,000 pounds,
It's a garbage trash truck.
It shouldn't be going down there.
They do always manage it all the time.
I understand.
Okay. It just read in the paper that East Brunswick, to their credit, received funding for repainting Old Stage Road, knowing of repainting Old Stage Road. Are they going to do this prior to this development so that all the paving that's done will be destroyed on this corner?
I don't know if she has any thoughts on this.
Well, just speaking to Councilman Spatafino, I don't think we know the timeframe on that. And I'm assuming that those funds will be here, Mark, for part of our, well, Mr. Kip. Come here and elaborate.
It's scheduled for next month.
Okay. From where to where?
It's from Cleveland Avenue.
All right, so it's the other direction.
So it's the other direction, okay. Well, that wasn't specified in the newspaper. Another question, and maybe I've all these meetings, and one of those hundred people have been here except when they changed the zoning. What does the facade look like? I mean, we were given an example of what it could potentially look like. Well, really, I have an architect's.
We did testify, and we had our architect present the facade treatment and the architectural features. I mean, I believe that was part of that exhibit.
Yeah, if you want, you can stop in this one building.
If you stop, if you go to the municipal building, you can pick those up.
Okay, maybe I misunderstood. I thought I heard that this is what it potentially could look like.
No.
No.
I don't know if it presented good light.
Raise your right hand. You scored, you scored a thousand. Tell them you're going to go through some government. State your names. Spell your last name and tell us.
Sure, it's Peter Eskow. I'm at 40 Centwood Drive in Spotswood. All right, so last time I was here, I don't really have much to say, but last time I was here, I just handed out a packet of what, you know, where that don't block the box. It wasn't like working. And I was mentioning that it may not be completely applicable because it didn't, it didn't have the hash lines in the property here. I mentioned that that is, that there's same type of hash lines on County Route 657, Cattle Road in front of the police department. I did stop by there on Thursday. And if I'm allowed, so I took photos for.
What purpose would these photos?
Just basically to show.
I mean, we drive it all the time. I drive Billtown all the time. I see sometimes people pay attention, sometimes not.
Yeah, that's, it could be accidental. It's roughly, I don't know if it's worth mentioning, it's roughly every three to four minutes that I've noticed this happen.
This was on Control Road in Eldridge?
Yes. Three to four minutes. There's actually two hash lines for each police station entrance slash exit. And yeah, within one of the two hash line area.
Well, with like S and P schools, ours have to be a little bit older.
Yeah, I mean.
So I think.
Easier, but.
Well.
Yeah, if you, if you're not.
I just, I understand the point you're making. And that, you know, that the best main plans of enforcement unless there's someone there enforcing it, don't know what's going to happen. We've all driven around New Jersey more than.
Yeah, especially in the heart for somebody in the New York City elector and say, team, turnpike, we've said in the old age, because I don't have to tell you guys. That's basically all I have to say. I say, does it notice?
Well, first of all, you have to lay a foundation as to who took the photograph. If I saw you, when, what it depicts. But I will state this, we can take judicial notice. I will take judicial notice that striped areas are sometimes violated by motorists in the state of New Jersey. Just like residents will try to make a left turn over a nautical curve should discard that. So that is, that is just the general stupidity of motorists in this state. But then judicial notice.
Yes, the woman's right over here. Is it green top? Is it green? Please raise your right hand. You scored, you scored a thousand. Tell them you're going to go through some government.
Yes.
State your name. Spell your last name and tell us.
Melinda Hoffman. H.O.F.F.M.A.N. And I live on Summerhill Road.
On where, sir?
On Summerhill.
Okay, there.
I was looking at the town green zoning, like the description of what the zone is.
Yeah.
And there are some, the way the zone is described here seems very different than, like, it's hard for me to read this because I have, it keeps kind of going back and forth. But there is a section about no less than 35% of the site shall be designated to useful open space for the purposes of landscaped courtyards, walkways, sitting areas, planted buffers, ornamental gardens, and special water features and other site amenities. It mentions the mixed-use center, you know, will have a village cluster type layout, not a linear strip center. You know, specialty materials, water features, landscaped internal pedestrian courtyards, sitting areas, alleyways, and other site amenities. And it talks about 35% of the property, which is like, I mean, that's over a third. That paints a very different picture than what's presented here. It seems like the intent of the zoning was to have a more open and generally like landscape attractive, you know, walkways and easy roads and water features. That sounds very different than what is here.
Yes. Please raise your right hand. You scored, you scored a thousand. Tell them you're going to go through some government.
I do.
State your names. Spell your last name.
Lisa Sanator. S.A.N.A.T.O.R.E. Three Henrietta Street, East Brunswick. A couple of questions about.
Henrietta, is that a region?
Henrietta, South of Mason. Just to the neighborhood, yeah.
That's handy, because we're also.
Right. First question is about the intersection itself. Is any part of the intersection being altered at all? Is it being renovated, changed in any way?
Summerhill and Old Stage?
Yes.
Well, there is not a light configuration per se, but there will be improvements along Summerhill Road based upon the County of Middlesex approval, which is additional striping, et cetera, and turning movements. But the actual physical intersection itself is no major redesign.
It's not being widened at all? Okay. Just if you travel through here to make a right turn heading south and then go west, that's a really tight turn from Summerhill onto Old Stage. Same going north. As you're heading north on Summerhill, you make a left. That's a really tight turn. And now we're going to be having a lot more truck traffic. Looking at the traffic report, the majority of traffic trucks is in north-south, straight-through direction. But now we're going to have more trucks, at least one a week, but also during construction, we're going to be having a lot more large vehicles going through a very tight intersection and then presumably making their way onto the site from the new entrance on Old Stage. Just wondering why there's no provisions being made to make that intersection very quiet.
That's a county intersection. A county.
They're fine with this?
They weigh in on it.
Okay. I can tell you that when I'm sitting in the left-hand turn lane on Old Stage, waiting to make my left onto Summerhill, people making their turn on Old Stage have a very difficult time getting around me. It's not striped properly. It's not wide enough. So that was my first point. We didn't talk at all today about the driveway. That was a big subject at the last meeting. A lot of residents and a few board members have some serious concerns about making that left out of that main driveway as a safety issue. And I seem to, I had trouble hearing the way the back last time, but I seem to remember our traffic expert wouldn't even weigh in on what calling that a safe movement or not. I couldn't read the minutes from the last meeting, but I seem to recall he was asked that direct question, is that a stated term? Making that left out of there? And he would not make a statement in one way or the other. Does anyone recall?
Well, yeah. First of all, traffic engineer's not here this evening.
Okay.
We weren't dealing with traffic this evening. But again, the County of Middlesex has reviewed this entire intersection, the entire layout on Summerhill Road, including those access driveways. And County of Middlesex has approved it.
And has jurisdiction.
And they have total jurisdiction over that, over Summerhill Road in particular. Not as much over Old Stage, Summerhill, they did.
They're saying it's adequate.
Yeah, well.
I would characterize it as yes, but.
They, they, Mr. Chairman, my understanding is the applicant did go to the county, met with them over a period of, well, over a year on this application. And the county did carefully review and assess many of the issues you're raising, and they did approve it, but with conditions.
Right.
And so those conditions will be complied with in terms of the county approval. In terms of, I don't want to speak for Mr. Watson, but I think he's not here to see you, but my understanding is that both Mr. Watson, who is with CME, he's a traffic consultant for the, for the town, and a traffic consultant for my client, they carefully assessed the turning movements out of both driveways, left turning movements and right turning movements on Summerhill. And there, and this gap should be quite enormous, but my understanding is that there, and one of the residents actually suggested these additional stripings do not block the intersection, the box, and allowing for gaps to be, to be established so that people could in fact, residents of the development and customers coming to the bank and pharmacy could make a lot of turnout based upon that, those gaps. So I believe the CME did exhaustive review on that. They were out at the site, they were, Mr. Watson spent weeks out there with, with our clients, traffic consultant from Dynamic, and looked at all the issues you're discussing. And at the end of the day, I believe Mr. Watson said, yes, it is safe and that the, based upon the Middlesex county conditions and the suggested other improvements on striping and, and the gaps that would be created. I don't want to speak for, but that, that was my reflection. John, can you bring it on back?
Yes, we, we had numerous meetings with the applicants, engineer and the traffic consultant, and, and our traffic department. And we made numerous suggestions. A lot of those changes have been made to the plan. The, the question came up, when you, when you deem something safe, it's, it's very difficult. There's only circumstances that will arise that as a, as a professional, there's certain terms that are hard to set. And, and so the fact that he didn't come out and say that the intersections would be safe doesn't mean that he didn't think that they would be, that they would be the best that we can make them at this point.
Right, I do remember that statement. He said, this is the best we can do. And my question is, does that mean this is the best we can do with this site plan? Or is there, could you reconfigure this to make it even safer? Could you have egress at the actual intersection under traffic control signal?
I think, I think the issues are with the site itself and with the trap, the existing traffic on Summerhill Road. If, if there's no place on the site that you're going to totally eliminate that issue with the left out.
Okay, well, my question is if you reconfigured.
But I think, and I don't mean to interrupt you, but just let me jump in. As, as volunteer members of this planning board, we can only vote on what we have in front of us. You know, if, you know, 18 were never filthy, this project would be a very different town, you know. If I exercised more, you know, that's a whole other story, but, but I think we can only deal with what we have. So I would ask anyone to kind of rebut their question to this application in front of us. Because as a, as a member of the planning board, and I think I've said this, I've lived in these projects since nineteen fifty-eight. About nineteen sixty-nine or seventy, I thought we were done out and out of it. It didn't work out that well. But it's all, it's, it's really, we have to kind of look at what we have, and that's really what we have to focus there.
To be fair, though, the, the developer has mentioned a hypothetical site plan a few times as being less desirable and causing more traffic, meaning that he's mentioned a medical arts building would be worse.
Right.
I'm asking about a site plan that would potentially be better.
We, 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 yeah, let me just jump in, Mr. Chairman. I mean, we, we're not here to, we're not here to develop this property for the developer. The developers submit this site plan, it gets reviewed by our staff. The traffic issues that is on the county road get reviewed by the county planning board, they have an engineering staff, they have a planning staff. They make recommendations, they issue approvals. So it's not our job, unfortunately, as much as we all would like to, to re-engineer a site, that's not our directive.
Okay, that's fine. Back to what one of the previous residents was talking about, and the spirit of the ordinance. And, you know, she, she mentioned all of the other features that are in the town green ordinance. And I would also like to point out that the original ordinance, which was written in the nineties, I believe, was for fifteen acres, and that was just recently changed. So the spirit of the ordinance was for a piece of property that was larger than this. The original ordinance was also mentioned, three specific roadways where this would be located. Didn't say it had to be located there, but that was the spirit of the ordinance, was to be on much more open roads with two lanes in each direction, Riders, Cranberry, I can't remember the other one. This does not fit that spirit of the ordinance. This is too small property to fit all these things, and also the spirit of the ordinance was for small pop shops, not commercial national retail chains. That's all I have.
Thank you.
I actually got a couple of dash cameras opened in front of the velour team, and that was speed limit of twenty-five mile per hour. And the engineer friend with, and actually designed everything for forty mile per hour. That's why we asked a question here. We just asked about the information we have in reality and what already provided for us. And that's three copies, if you would like to have it as a record.
I'll indicate it as zero three, and I, and I think what, that actually piqued my curiosity. John, did we have a discussion about this?
Yes.
But I think the twenty-five actually started, the twenty, that sign apparently is not in the proper place because it's twenty-five when you get into Spotswood.
All right, so we need, if it's not the proper, then it should be removed, or we need clarification for that, right?
Well, the speed limit is a speed limit, so the question is, and, and speed limits are there for enforcement purposes, but my understanding is that the forty mile an hour speed limit runs up to Spotswood border, and then drops down to twenty-five.
Because if it's a speed limit twenty-five, it would affect all the design, and he mentioned last time it's not going to affect the design. I actually have a couple of tables here from.
Well, I think Mr. Sax answered the question, though. The speed limit is forty up until the, the exit East Brunswick, and then it drops to twenty-five.
Yeah, and by the way, as part of their deliberative process, and I keep, you know, I keep throwing this off to the county, but it's a county road. The county is aware of what its speed limits are, they're the ones who set the speed limits, not, not the municipal. Spotswood has set the speed limit, where it does, East Brunswick. But they obviously are aware of what the speed limits are, and, and that is obviously, you know, again, I'm not speaking, because the county trusts me, I'm not speaking.
Yeah, but we need to ask for clarification, give us the information, right?
Well, I just answered your question.
Yes, and now the other question about the safety rate, the accident rate for that intersection, it's, it's actually a simple, very simple equation, or you already have the daily traffic, the average daily traffic from his calculation, the number. He actually counted it, and it's around three accidents, two to three accidents per million car going through that intersection within a year. So every million car, one million car going through the intersection should be less than three accidents. So if it's more than three accidents, considering a high risk.
Excuse me, sir, are you a traffic engineer?
I'm a professional.
Are you a traffic engineer?
Uh, yeah, it's.
Yours, yours, your license, let me, let me clarify that, so.
I'm a licensed.
Are you testifying as a layperson who's, who's concerned about this application, or are you testifying as a traffic?
No, I testify as a resident, but I see the information available online, and I can provide it from Ash to or another book if you need it.
But again, you're not testifying as a traffic engineer?
Yes.
Okay, just want to make that clear.
Okay, so it's around two to three accidents for each million car going through the intersection, because our engineer can verify that. And I think he verified this information in the first board meeting when he discussed the traffic. He mentioned it's around two to three accidents per million car. So right now, we have all the data, we just need the number.
He said, we have all the data, what are you talking about?
We, the police department have the accident number of accidents through the intersection.
We know what this, we know what the Spotswood Police Department has provided to us, they give us the number. Now, again, in fairness, nobody has looked at the, the qualitative history of what's contained in those accident reports. We don't know what caused those accidents, we don't know what speed they were traveling, we don't know if someone just passed out and was delusional, we don't know if it was a drunk driver, so, yeah, we know the number, and I, believe me, I trust Mr. Sucozzo's accuracy, and I'll accept the notice that there's a hundred, there were a hundred and nine accidents, but we don't know the details of those accidents.
Yes, that's whether like over five years or six years, I mean, we're not exactly on many, but it doesn't call what caused the accident, it's just that how many accidents for that intersection. The other can say about the classification of each accident, I would just need the number. And the number technically, if I have to put it in a body, if it's safe to add more traffic.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to be heard? Do I see no more hands? Okay, then declare the public portion closed. All right, I didn't miss anybody, did I? Okay, great. So the next meeting for this application.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, that would be a week from tonight.
Week from tonight.
April twenty-fourth at seven thirty PM, and again, I would expect that the board will render a decision.
Mr. Chairman, any questions? Is, yeah, it's a professional's duty here, because I know I have a lot of your business questions that I know.
Well, I, I'm sorry, I assume they would.
Yes, of course, I want to confirm that. It will be here.
Are there any board members that have a, a further question tonight, or something that they want?
The architect, you certainly said, oh, so. Oh, that's, I was, for a minute, he's not available, so if you have any questions.
Is there any question?
You can submit them through this.
The architects, let's do them down. Thanks for bringing that up, David.
Can you address the flat roof issue for the residential components, which when Mr. Barlow was asking questions about variance with your planner, I believe it was going to the question of whether the variance.
I think we addressed it at the prior meeting, Mr. Barlow, we can certainly have the architect clarify that.
Right, and is it the basis of the flat roof versus the pitch roof on the architectural component?
Sure.
Yeah, you were asking for a waiver from.
Waiver or variance?
It's a waiver.
I believe it's a waiver.
It's a sign.
I'm sorry, it's, it's a variance.
Well.
In this one intersection.
Pitch roof?
You're doing a flat roof, not a pitch roof, but the ordinance requires pitch roof.
Correct, we're designing.
I'm sorry, ordinance basically says flat roofs are not permitted. That's all it says.
So the basis of the flat roof from an architect's standpoint is the bottom?
Um, we felt that this is perfectly, in, in, blended very well with the surrounding architecture. We feel that this, it serves the style of building very well, and we feel that it works very well within this market.
The surrounding architecture of.
East Brunswick.
What about residential components in East Brunswick are pitch roof?
Single-family homes, which is, there are many, there are many buildings in East Brunswick that are flat roofs, commercial buildings.
Are you planning on utilizing the flat roofs for compressor, DC units, or anything like that?
Absolutely, when I did my testimony, you talked about that, yes.
And they're going to be parrot, okay, parrot.
The parrot that was going to be utilized to screen all of the, the cabinets.
Thank you.
Sure.
I, I don't know, my question is for the architect, they may be hybrid, so the, the garbage is being held in the buildings, correct?
Correct, at the bottom of each of the, the trash chutes is a compactor. Those, that compactor will compact that trash, and then the trash is brought out at the time into the bin by maintenance.
And, and how is recycling, would you take care of bottles, cans, cardboard?
Well, there are two, there are two options. We designed in the ability to both, one, you can sort it in a chute. Sometimes that's not desired, so we put recycling in each of the trash bins on each level, and then those are brought down by maintenance.
And how, I, I, I don't think it was described before, maybe, how often are your trucks going to come? We're talking recycling trucks or?
Well. You know, it's hard to answer, you know, based on.
Yeah, it's, it's really just based on demand, you know, as we gauge it according to demand, we get off the collections if it need be, if not, it's typically once a week. Okay, because we have other apartment complexes in the municipality, in the township, that when we switch the once-a-week pickup, which is from September to May. Yeah, and they're overflowing.
Is there trash compactor?
Excuse me?
Is there trash compactor?
I don't, I don't know the answer to that, but when we switch to once-a-week pickup, it seems to be a problem. Okay, so when we allow it twice, we do pickup.
We, we do private, we're doing private home, so we manage the trash.
Okay, so you're not going to look for the township to pick up your garbage?
Absolutely not.
Okay, happy to do that. The park, do your apartments are fully sprinkled, in them, or just the, the, the walkways, the stairwell?
They're fully sprinkled.
Including the garage?
Including the garages and the interstitial spaces.
The, the talk about the units itself, and I know there's some hypothetical questions before. Is it possible to build this site without taking down any trees?
Not, not this plan, not, not, not this plan, no.
If you were just building your apartments, you could do it without taking down?
If we just built one building, we, and, you know, we could, we could definitely design the plan that takes down the trees.
Will you be outlining the, the playground and the age classifications, because in New Jersey, in a environment like this, there's age limits on a playground, which I was all too aware of.
We're going to hire an expert to handle the design of the playground.
But in that small area, you probably can only have one age group.
I think that the expert will expand the area if he thinks that it needs to be expanded.
The wall packs on the building, on the back of the building, which is a variance, and I think the candle lights we talked about, would it be possible not to have the wall packs and lower the candle lights if you installed more holes?
When you say wall packs, you mean a light unit that was required for safety?
Yes.
Did we decide whether it was going to be wall or, or wall up? Yeah, I mean, they'll be shielded, so they're not sending lights out, but it's required for safety, it's just down.
Well, we're talking about variances that you're asking for.
Correct.
And I, I understand what you're saying, I know I understand what our doctor's saying, I understand what the residents are saying. And I have the luxury to be in a municipal building five, six, sometimes seven days a week, okay? And I understand a little about the spirit of that ordinance, village green. Right, it's supposed to be green area, we only got a little green on that chart. So I'll, I'll have a lot more questions about snow removal and so on, but I think you wanted to wait till that's stumbled out for that. So I appreciate that. One last question, the council, current council just passed an ordinance regarding charging stations. And I know your application came in here prior to that ordinance being passed. Being a new, a new additionist, are you interested in complying with our new ordinance? Because if this application came in in two weeks, you wouldn't have to comply with it.
I know that, you know, I don't, I, we're not familiar with the requirement just yet, but I know that this client would never let someone walk out if they had an electric car, if they pulled in a electric car and monitored the charging station, they would get a charging station.
What I'm saying is, maybe I'm not saying this clearly, I'd like you to comply with the new ordinance if we do do this application.
Can you define, describe what the new ordinance is?
My planner sent it, I believe, to your attorney, and he has it on record, because I asked her to do that, and I trust that she, she's done it. Well, I will discuss it with Mr. Vannoy, and I think obviously.
No, one of my leading answers is yes, I'd like to be able to read through the detail.
I, I will hold the rest of my questions until the next one, Mr. Chairman.
Any other? Yeah, yeah, the architect will not be here, so just, no further questions from the architect, I think.
All right, so at that meeting, you will not receive any further notice. I'm giving you your notice now. So that meeting will be a week from tonight, seven thirty PM.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Look for the Germans, and the Yankees, see the back of the woods.